Meeting today with an invocation from Gene Shelburne. Gene, thank you for being here to start our meeting.
Lord, you know that for us today is election day again. And you also know that some of the biggest challenges our elected officials will wrestle with here today are the results of negative votes cast in an election not long past. Thank you, Lord, for letting us live in a place where we, the people, get to make our wishes known. Thank you for giving us the right to elect leaders who can protect us when we vote yes or no without knowing the true impact of the votes we cast. Bless us here today, Lord, as our leaders shuffle the day-to-day paperwork and make the minor decisions that keep our city running. But even more fervently, Lord, we ask you to grant them the wisdom of your Holy Spirit as they ponder solutions to questions that will shape our municipal operations long after all of us are gone. May the results of today's meeting be a long-lasting blessing for us all. We pray in the name of your son.
If you'd like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
Please, Lord, of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll pass it to the moderator to run our public address portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's City Council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we are glad you are here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address City Council regarding posted agenda items. Every speaker has three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you'll hear a warning beep alerting you that you have 30 seconds remaining. We ask that you stay within your three minutes allotted. Speakers are asked to limit your comments to items on the posted agenda. We also have several public hearings on the agenda today, so if you were here to speak on an item that has a public hearing, we would request that you make your comment during either public address or the public hearing, but not both, in order to keep accurate records. It is your decision which you want to speak during. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and whether or not you live in the city limits of Amarillo. Please let us know the agenda item you're speaking, if you're speaking on, for, or against it. And again, thank you for being here to share your thoughts. So with this, I will call up our first public address sign-up, which is Mr. Don Tips. And after Don, Michael Fisher will be on deck. Try to push the button on the side of it. It'll turn green.
Great, okay. Okay, thanks. My name's Don Tips. I'm a lifetime resident of Amarillo. I do live in the city limits. I'm a 22-year business owner as well, so I want to thank the council members and Mayor Nelson for y'all's voluntary service, helping steer Amarillo. We do appreciate that. I was pretty thankless, so we do appreciate that. The statement I'm here to make is in regard to non-consent item K, the discussion on the Civic Center redevelopment project. I was actually pretty surprised to even see it on the agenda. Mayor Nelson, it's my understanding you have recently had meetings with Project Destiny regarding making Amarillo a sanctuary city. And you stated that your major objection to this was and may still be the possible cost of litigation. So though I disagree with your stand on that, possible litigation, because it's all the litigation that would be handled from that would have been taken pro bono, so it wouldn't have cost the city anything. But I can at least acknowledge your concern for the fiscal responsibility of the city. That brings me to my statement today. Discussing the Civic Center redevelopment or moving forward with it in any way seems very risky or cavalier for the city. This issue has been proposed to the voters of Amarillo twice and has been rejected twice, as y'all know. In moving forward with it, it just seems that either we're pushing personal agendas or some other issue that the city's already rejected. You know, the voters have rejected it twice, and it just doesn't seem like it would even be up for discussion. And the only way I see a $500 million project move forward would be through debt service. There may be another way that y'all propose. I don't know, but it's through debt service. And if the debt service is taken on, you know, it's going to be funded by taxpayers, you know, which they've already, the city has already rejected, you know, implicitly. So because the will of the people or the voters has already been made known on the issue, advancing this project would be in direct opposition to exactly the citizens who have put y'all in office. So the only way I know to, if y'all discuss this or when you discuss this, if you choose to move forward, it seems the only way I know to stop that on this side is through litigation, okay? To stop that funding, which, as I mentioned before, you know, you wanted to avoid for sure. So even when that issue involved making a positive declaration to Amarillo of saving the unborn, this one is something that's against the will of the citizens. And so my hope is that y'all would consider this, you know, in your discussion, that it's already been voted on, that the will of the people have already been, it's already been spoken, and your apparent disregard for the will of the citizens that elected you. So I just want y'all to take that into account whenever you do talk about that.
Don, I'd be happy to have a meeting with you to talk about that other issue. I think that's an unfair characterization and certainly not the summary of my conversations with them.
I would love to, yeah. And I would love a response to any of this. I mean, a personal response.
Great.
If you would respond to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, we'll be happy to reach out and set up a time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tips. Next, Michael Fisher. And on deck after Mr. Fisher will be Claudette Smith.
My name's Mike Fisher. I live in the city limits of Amarillo. I've lived here for over 25 years, own multiple businesses. I'm working today. That's why I look like this. You guys are trying to burn this place down on your way out, I guess. All these 100% tax payments for these companies that will be drawing resources paid for out of the general fund but won't be paying a dime back in, for, in most cases, 10 years. Here's an idea. Give some tax payments to some local businesses that have already proven themselves. Besides, your buddies over at Toot and Totem and the Cavernous Meatpackers. In regards to the same thing that gentleman was just speaking about, you're gonna, you guys have found another loophole called tax notes for the Civic Center. Tax notes have some other requirements that you guys may not have, you probably know about, but you're probably overlooking. They require the Attorney General's approval. They cannot exceed 75% of the revenue or taxes anticipated to be collected in the year it's passed. House Bill 1869 further restricts you from doing this because it closes the loophole that your lame city attorney must have found with our former city attorney, McCamey, McCamey's assistants. House Bill 1869 says, redefines the term of debt. Debt means a bond, warrant, certificate of obligation, or other evidence of indebtedness owed by a taxing unit that has been approved at an election and is payable solely from property taxes and installments over a period of more than one year. Section 2 of this bill says the change in the law made by this act applies only to bond, warrant, certificate of obligation, or other evidence of indebtedness. So in other words, the taxpayers have to approve this, period. That's what House Bill 1869 says. And I'll back the guy that was just here, and I'll pitch in for the lawsuit. So that's what you're going to be in for if you guys try to pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Ms. Smith. And on deck after Ms. Smith will be James Skank.
My name is Claudette Smith, and I live within the city limits of Amarillo. Help me understand what part of "no" that this council doesn't seem to understand. The voters were very clear on the measure of a new civic center. Not once, but twice, they said no. They didn't say "right now," as Mayor Nelson stated before. They said "no." Yet, not even one month later, this council was back at it again, pushing the agenda of a new civic center. Do you folks understand that you were elected to represent the will of the voters who elected you to office? With regard to the tax note being voted on today, according to House Bill 1869, which was passed for this specific reason, being to nix the misuse of COs and the type, legally, I don't think this can even be done. Essentially, you're trying to take out a loan for what, $260 million, under the guise of what I don't know, because this isn't a core function of the city. This is not core at all. This is strictly for entertainment. Not only that, the note can only be taken out for a debt that was previously voter-approved. This is not a debt that was voter-approved at any point in time. I'm going to say at the very least, since you guys are so adamant on pushing the matter of a civic center, which I completely disagree with, but I'm going to say at the very least, since you're going to go ahead and move forward anyways, without voter approval, that I think you guys need to go back to the drawing board and probably find a new legal team to look at the matter, because, again, I don't think that this is legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Skank. And our last speaker on deck after Mr. Skank will be Catherine Traves.
Let's get it fixed. It's fixed. James Skank's in the city limits. As you've heard me say before, all good government begins at the local level. So does all bad government. You know, and when you look at it from that perspective, we're a constitutional republic. Voters matter. Votes matter. Public address matters. Limited government matters. When we're involved with this kind of circumvention of trying to figure out how to put this arena right here, we've seen such manipulative things going on. Instead of just, you put it to a vote, they said no. Listen, listen. You may have a few thousand, maybe 10,000. You didn't have more than 20,000, 28,000 in the last thing that voted for it, but you had about 40,000 that voted against it. There's a whole herd of people that want to live within our means. When you're looking at these, going to these tax notes now, the operative word in there is an anticipation note. So it's based on anticipating revenue from a said project. If it doesn't meet the anticipated debt service, then where do we get the money? And that falls back on the citizens in such a way. Have we ever used, in the history of Amarillo, a tax note? I'm not sure. I did a little bit of research, couldn't find one inkling. If this was something you could have done in the past, why wasn't it brought up earlier? And then the revenue bonds, you know, that's another thing, because you're going to try to use a revenue bond here where we raise the water and sewer a little bit, just because the water and sewer department's over there, and you're going to use that to increase our water bills for a while to pay on a revenue bond. If I'm incorrect, you can speak to it. I was surprised you spoke back today, Mayor, because I thought that was not what we would do. Whether you got, you know, you usually do it with me after I sit down. But thank you for your time today. Pay attention to the caterpillar way. What are you reading there? Is it a good one?
We have the author as a guest at our meeting today, Mr. Skank.
Thank you, Mr. Skank. Our last speaker today is Catherine Traves.
Good afternoon. I am a resident of Amarillo and have been for 25 years. I'm here to talk about the consent item D, ordinance 7979. I also serve as president of the San Jacinto Neighborhood Advocates. And yes, we're pivoting to this new name because that's really who we are. We don't want to be confused with the homeowners association. On behalf of our organization, we want to thank Emily Kohler and Anne Marie Rosato and their entire team for their hard work on this project. We also want to thank you, thank you all for the partnership for the sidewalk repair cost share program. Since we began to promote this program back in February, we have had quite a bit of interest, especially among landlords. However, our focus is helping the individual property owners at this time. The retired folks, veterans, hardworking families, single moms and dads in our neighborhood are the ones who need a helping hand to make their homes a safer place to live. This project is one of many goals in the San Jacinto Plan. Since we began to form in March, April of 2020, we have had more than half of our goals either in progress or completed. That's two short years during a pandemic. With the support of the city of Amarillo, we are proud to start paving the way for a brighter future in San Jacinto. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Traves. Mayor, that concludes our public address.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll move on to Agenda Item 1A, which is reviewing your packet council for anything, questions that we need to address ahead of time in the information presented in the packet. Does anyone have anything? Hearing nothing. Item 1B, our updates from council members serving on outside boards and commissions. B, Roman numeral I, is beautification of public arts advisory board. Dr. Sauer?
Yes, ma'am. The board met on May the 10th, and it was actually a pretty quick meeting. The only thing that was really discussed was there's a kind of a push to see if they can develop some things that we can do on the crosswalks and underpasses. And Michael Kishuba, he gave us an update that it's going to take multiple licenses and permits, and it's, that are going to be mandatory to execute being able to do beautification, like murals on crosswalks and that kind of thing. So they're working their way through exactly what that ends up looking like. But it would be a real nice enhancement to be able to do some of those kind of things at the crosswalks and underneath the underpasses. The other thing that was discussed was the mural plaques. So what we would like to see happen is, when we've done the mural grant for the past four years, is we would like to be able to put something, a plaque of sorts on each one of those murals so that someone can hit a QR code. There'll be a QR code on there, and we'll give you information about that. And we'll also kind of give you an idea of where the other murals are. And so there's been some designs that have been done, and so we're working on getting that, hopefully, in place before Center City does their mural run on June the 4th. And that really was the only things that we talked about.
Excellent. Any questions about that? Yeah, I think this is going to be the Eddie Sauer Show for just a minute here.
For a little while.
Parks and Rec?
Yes, ma'am. So that board met on the next day, on the 11th. And some things that happened there was, one of the first things we found out was Maddy Penner had turned in her resignation as special events coordinator, which will be, which is a real sad thing because she's done some really great help with us as far as events coordinating, and it's kind of helped set up a lot of the things as we move forward as Parks Board. But she got pretty much the same position with the city of Denver. So, you know, you've just got to applaud that ability that she's getting to move on up, and she's a very bright star wherever she heads off to. That's really the only thing that happened as far as the staffing was concerned. We did get to meet Austin Farley, who is the new aquatics coordinator for the city, and he's going to do a great job. We're looking forward to having him take over that part of the area. The only other thing that we really discussed was, we discussed the athletic lighting project update. And we are in the middle of the RFP's request for proposals. The closing date should be June the 6th, and then hopefully, right after that, we'll be immediately beginning to move things forward. And on a note kind of, that supports the need for doing the athletic lighting is, they had a light that they had to decommission at John Stiff Memorial Park. So Southwest Ballpark 5 is now no longer can be used in the evenings without lights because one of the light poles was damaged, and basically, they ended up having to remove it. The lights were about to fall. They were only hanging on by one bolt. And so that's just kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of why it was so important for us to be able to get the athletic lighting taken care of. And with that, that pretty much, the only other thing was playground updates. So on the playground updates, Benton Park, the groundbreaking occurred on May the 5th. And then actually, Mary Hazel Reg was actually, what, the 11th or 12th is when the groundbreaking. There's two more that will be coming up pretty quickly, May the 31st and June the 1st. I don't have the email in front of me, but there'll be two more groundbreaking, and we'll be seeing that about every two weeks. We'll probably see groundbreakings for these playgrounds until we have got all 10 of them going. So that's really looking, that's really looking really good. And that was really, pretty much, that's the only thing that we talked about on Parks at this point in time.
Any questions about that report, council? Okay, last one, animal management. Eddie?
Okay. Animal management and welfare met on the 11th, also at 5:00 PM. That was kind of a busy couple of days, to say the least. Animal management and welfare is, they're going through a relatively bit of a trying time at this point in time. The live release rate is down quite a bit. And as Victoria presented, some of the things that have happened is, some of the main three things that have happened is, there's been a huge drop-off in rescue that's come in from the Humane Society. And if you were to look at the numbers which they show, and you'll see that the rescue rate has dropped off by 40% to 70%, depending upon what you're talking about. And the good thing that has happened is the adoptions by the city, their adoption program is actually up over 200%. And an average month is about 591 adoptions, and in March and April, they did 720 and 794, respectively. So the adoption rate is up significantly as far as them trying to take care of that. Another thing that's also had an effect upon lowering of the live release rate is we've actually almost filled all the positions for the Amarillo Control Officers. And with that, those guys are doing their jobs. They even gave us a snapshot of a typical day, and they actually addressed 69 calls in a given day. So that's significantly higher than what's been in the past. So there's still some, there's a lot that needs to be done. The shelter is full. That makes it difficult. We have a lot of stray animals that are still out there, and that's a hard thing to try and take care of. One of the things that, and Victoria, you might have to help me on this one a little bit. We're working with an agreement with BISL, and they're doing some large, they're doing a large animal transfers. Is that correct? And we're trying to get involved with that. That would probably have a pretty significant effect on that.
Yes, sir. We've reached out to some national organizations, just understanding that the rescue community is struggling right now. And so we've reached out to BISL to be able to help us do some out-of-state and long-term relationships to get our animals out into rescue.
And that could be pretty helpful in trying to change that, change the trajectory that things have been on lately. So is there anything else that I have missed up to that point?
No, we've just had, like, so many people in our community and businesses, and especially our local, from Amarillo College to WT to Texas Tech's vet school and AMTEC with the school district, really getting out and doing our vaccine clinics. We recently just did one in San Jacinto that was hugely successful. It was a pop-up so we could really focus on the issues that we're having in a lot of our communities to try to change the tide on having so many strays and having so many unvaccinated strays.
That's everything.
Great progress. Any questions, council, for Victoria or Dr. Sauer? Okay, thank you, Victoria. Thank you, Eddie. And then we have a report also from the Environmental Task Force. Councilman Smith?
Thank you. I'll be very brief. We had a meeting just this last week, and we discussed the same two topics that we did a month before, if you remember my report. A concern is we have a dump ground, and people are cutting the grass and sending it to the dump ground. And prevailing knowledge is that we need to not cut as much. We need to mulch. We need to leave more of the grass clippings in the yard, and it'll help our dump ground not fill up as quick. And then the second topic we talked about, we do card And then the second topic we talked about, we do cardboard collecting. And they're going to, we're going to review the locations where that's done and try to figure out to get more cardboard. So that's, that's what we covered. It's a continuing discussion.
Good. Okay. Questions?
I've got one question. So we usually are real cognizant of taking our cardboard, putting it someplace, and a lot of them have been K&amp;V recycling. And I saw one at the Sam's on Ross that was actually a City of Amarillo one. So is the City of Amarillo actually beginning to do cardboard collection as well?
Donnie Hooper might correct me, but the city does some, but then there's one particular company that does it also.
So how long has the city been doing? Have they been doing it a while?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because that was the first time I'd seen it. And when we went there, Tina said, yeah, she brings her, the cardboard typically over there whenever she's going to the Sam's over there on Ross.
It's actually the whole, the basis of our discussion has been about our partnership with KB. We have a partnership with them, where we're working through them to help with our recycling efforts of cardboard. So we're looking to expand that now. The one behind Sam's is actually a KB City of Amarillo slash partnership cardboard recycling dumpster, but it still all goes to KB for their processing. We don't have a way to do that within the City of Amarillo, so that's why we use their services. We're just looking to expand that, too. We know it's been successful, and we know we can put it in some other places and see some other success with that. So he's been a great partner for us.
So one other question about that is, you know, you'll see those green KB recycling bins all over the place, and they're not specifically for that particular entity, right? Anybody can dump cardboard in any of those.
Yeah, they have some that are, that are public. That's where our partnership comes in. Then they also have a lot of private containers that are leased out, rented out to a business, or they're placed on a business property. And the only way that I found out about that is I was placing some of my cardboard in one of those, and I was corrected at one of the meetings. He said, hey, that's their cardboard recycling dumpster. And I said, oh. So we had to find the locations where it is open to the public.
Which ones are those for the public and which ones are for businesses?
Oh, gosh, I would have to, you know, get a map or get with him and get something too. But I could. We could provide that at a different meeting if you would like to see something related to that.
Because I typically dump at a place that's close to my office, and I don't know if the UA is their personal one or whether that's a public one.
I really don't know that it's a big deal as long as it's not, you know, full or overflowing. And that's one of the things that we're doing is visiting with him so that we can find out other locations and make it more accessible for the public to be able to place items there, just like you and I are doing. We have, we want to take it. We want to find a place to do that. We don't know exactly where all of them are. So we're going to get some clarity on that, and we can come back to you and bring those to you at our next Environmental Task Force meeting, get a map, and produce that if council would like to see that.
I think I would kind of, that way you can kind of let, we can kind of let people know where it's available, where it's not. And really, honestly, I really appreciate Adam's share and working with the city.
Oh, yeah. He has been wonderful.
That's a really great move on his part to try and help out.
Absolutely.
So I really appreciate what he's allowed us to do.
I echo that. He's been great for us. So I know he would appreciate that as well and help us put that map together so we can do that.
Donnie, what types of things is the city currently collecting, either through that KB partnership or otherwise?
That part.
Cardboard?
Yes. And we have oil recycling at our, at our location.
Oil.
Yeah. And those are pretty minimal, too. We're actually looking at expanding that as well. There was one that was, and some of the fire stations have closed down. That's where those locations were at, and they've opened up a new fire station. We're looking at the possibilities of putting those at the new locations as well. And I know we've reached out to the fire department, another cooperative with that. We just haven't finished that project. So that may be something that we would need to come back with you as well. I don't know that there's, you know, with you asking that same question, people just don't know what all we're recycling. We're not doing as much as we probably should be, but we're looking to expand those efforts as much as we can. And with the knowledge of people like KB and people that are helping us with those efforts, I think we're going to be able to do some good things in the next year with it. That's really all that we're doing as far as recycling is concerned.
That is a question that I get occasionally. What are we collecting? What more could we be collecting? And how can citizens be more informed about where to drop things off? So I think that is definitely a good information piece, maybe to go back to that task force with, but then we might want a full presentation here at the council.
We'll plan on doing that the next meeting.
Okay.
At the next, after we have the next Environmental Task Force meeting.
That'd be wonderful.
Great. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you, Donnie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sauer, anything else? Okay. Thank you. The next item is 1C, which is a presentation of the 2022 Every Drop Counts poster contest winners, and we're going to push that item because those winners are finishing up their last week of school. And so we really would like for them to be here to do that presentation, and we'll carry that hopefully at the next meeting. Item 1D then is to discuss Ecolution, an interesting business proposal that we have here, and so I'll pass that to the city manager.
Mayor, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and throw it to Managing Director Rich Guyon to introduce our friends from Ecolution. Really interesting ideas, exciting ideas. Rich, take us away.
Awesome. Thank you for the time. So as you know, I'm always on the hunt for ways to utilize innovative new technologies to either offer additional services or drive efficiencies within the city. Today, we actually started with a couple of very simple questions. One, the city spends millions every year on fuel, just fueling our vehicles. How do we drive efficiency there so that money could be used in other ways? And two, as the world moves more and more to electric vehicles, how do we as a city stay ahead of, stay ahead of that trend and develop a plan that gets us the most efficiency as we move forward with, with new technology? Now fortunately, Melissa Ashurst, our broadband and smart city consultant with Impact Broadband, ran into a company that's focused on the exact same problem. So today, what I would like to do is, one, we have some very special guests. We have Johnny Ten-Gautier, who's the CTO of the company. I introduce him first because we all know he's the brains. So without him, there would be no company. We also on, on audio, we have Johan Medina Ten, who's their CEO. And then finally, I'd like to introduce, it's really kind of an honor and a privilege to do so, I have to say. We have the chairman of the board and founder, Craig T. Luchard. And the name may sound familiar to you, and if it does, it's because, well, he was a finalist for S&amp;P's prestigious Platt CEO of the Year Award. He is a New York Times bestselling author for The Caterpillar Way. He's started three companies, all three of which exceeded $1 billion revenue inside of 18 months. And if you ever have time to have coffee with him, ask him about being the one and only person to ever execute a reverse hostile tender merger. That is some Hollywood storyline. It's worth, it's worth the conversation. So with that, I'm going to enter, I'm going to hand off to Craig and let him talk to you about what the company does, and then Donnie and I will come back up and talk to you about the specific use cases that we're working with them on.
Great. Rich, thank you very much for that overly nice introduction. My proudest accomplishment is I have a beautiful wife and six kids. That exceeds everything I've done on the business side. I'm from Naples, Florida, by the way, not from Amarillo, and I want to thank you for inviting us here. Oh, sure. Thank you. I want to thank you for inviting me and our team here to Amarillo. In my way-too-long of a career, I've been on four continents in I don't know how many countries. I can honestly say this is the nicest town I have ever been introduced to. Everybody from the hostesses in the hotel to the people on the street are so nice here, and I just want to compliment you as a town. It's amazing to me, this place, and we're very happy to make a proposal to bring our business here, which we'd like to do. For anyone with a negative thought from the private, from the prior comments, by the way, those were very professionally conducted in this meeting. I salute you for that. And I can tell you that we are here not to ask your city or your state for even one penny. We would like to come here and build our business with our money and to help make your community healthier, and hopefully to save the city and this general area money on the cost of energy. We, five years ago, have a brilliant guy sitting right here who made a scientific discovery that has now gone through the patent process around the world, and, and we own the right to generate electricity in moving vehicles, which include train cars, trailers, and other forms of vehicles, and generating, generating electricity in very large amounts. And we have our first city partner, and that's St. Paul, Minneapolis-St. Paul, but St. Paul, Minnesota. We're negotiating in cities around the world right now as we speak, including Tokyo in, in Japan, Lagos, Nigeria, in Africa, and others. The place we really want to come, quite frankly, and the perfect match for us, is Amarillo, Texas. And so that's why we're here. And I have some slides that I could very quickly go through if that's okay.
Sure.
And if I have the time to do that. So it's a little hard to see that, but this is our team. And our team consists of myself, Johnny, and Johan, who's on a Zoom call because of a family medical emergency. We're on the top of that. Our directors include Jack Greenberg, who is the CEO of McDonald's Corporation, when it hit its peak. And you've got a few McDonald's here in town, so I think everybody knows that one. Ernie Higa, who's one of the great entrepreneurs of the city of Tokyo and owns the fast food franchises of a number of American companies there. Food is very important to us, the delivery of food. Dick Germinis on the left, who was the CEO of Wabash National, the country's largest maker of trailers, which becomes very important to our energy generating capabilities. And finally, Bill Farley, who's a private equity industrialist from Chicago, who's a very good friend of mine, brilliant man, and Randy Reed, who runs several companies for Carl Icahn. So we have wonderful mentoring of the people inside us. On the bottom left, we outsource our engineering because we're an early-stage company. We can't afford all those salaries yet, so we outsource our engineering to Day &amp; Zimmerman, a 100-year-old fantastic firm in Greenville, South Carolina, and to KTM in the same town. They sit next to the BMW gigantic plant there in the track, but they're doing the engineering of our science. And then on the right is our business team, and we've got four fantastic business analysts at the Wharton School of Business in UPenn that work diligently to do our analysis for us. And so that's the team of our early-stage company, all really great people. Minneapolis-St. Paul being our first hub project. We have some of our partners on here, which include Wabash National, the trailer company I mentioned. They're making our prototype. They're helping us make it. Meritor is in the city of Detroit. They make axles and brakes, and they're the biggest firm in North America that does that. But UPenn and Wharton and Day &amp; Zimmerman, Pantech, these are all fantastic partners that will come with us as a consortium to help us figure out the problems of, of energy, how to lessen its cost to a city, how to make a city a smart city, and very importantly, how to make a city a healthier city. So we could go to the next one.
San Jacinto.
Yeah, there you go. Again, a little bit tough to see. And by the way, if anybody in here wants to see this, just get my email address. I'll send you these things if you'd like to read them. It's no problem at all. So look, the, the, what happens with us, think of Amarillo as this brilliant place from the perspective of alternative energy, because you've got lots of wind here and you've got lots of sun. So from the, from the perspective of wind power and solar power, you really can't get better than Amarillo. We actually, though, believe that kinetic energy, producing energy from moving vehicles, so think of it as recycling the energy that's already been consumed by a moving vehicle, is what the world has been waiting for. Because solar and wind, other than in Amarillo, have issues in various places. For instance, when, in a cold state, solar doesn't work very well. Where it's not sunny, it doesn't. And wind itself can be great, but in, when it's not windy, then it's not very good. So it's geographic in, in its locations where it's really effective. So for us to be around the country collecting energy from moving vehicles, we think the potential is greater than for wind and solar combined for the United States. So we're talking about large amounts of, of energy here. And so what, what you might think of is a train car moving down a track on a diesel freight train. Think of three locomotives and 100 cars. And we've got one, two, or three of those cars producing 2 megawatt-hours of energy per day. It's a lot of energy. So you start to think about 20 or 50 or 100 rail cars, and you pretty soon become the largest energy company in the United States. And so our goal is to start very small and to be very conservative. Our company has no debt whatsoever, and I hope we never do. We have wonderful investors that have invested in the company. I was the first, but not the best. When you think of us, think of rail cars pulling into town with energy in containers on a flat rail car or in a container on a flat trailer bed, pulling into town, collecting into what we call a megapack, where the city itself can have its own source of power, reduce its cost of fuel of various types. And at the same time, we then charge electric vehicles with that power we create, and we offer to the city as our partner to use our balance sheet to purchase electric buses and lease those to the cities, and then we charge them with the energy that comes into town from these vehicles. I say that, electric buses, you know, people kind of think, eh, electric buses. But in the United States, there are roughly 500,000 school buses that are diesel-powered. That means 36 million kids are breathing those emitents every morning and every afternoon. And there's an equity topic involved with this in that the rich kids don't breathe it. You know, the people that can't afford as much have a, have a more difficult problem with these emissions. And so we offer to the city partners we have to purchase electric buses into our company, lease them into the city so that they don't have to spend that money on the buses, and then we charge them with our energy coming off the train lines and the trailer lines. So think of us like that, and we'll go to this next slide here. So this, this is how you might think of Amarillo. You've got a train on the bottom right coming in. You've got a train coming into town, a few cars coming off that train to download electricity directly into the train station. So the train station has a micro grid of electricity coming from us. You see a baseball stadium there in the bottom left, and that can become a micro grid of electricity that's being fed by the trains and the trailers. And in those parking lots, you see about 40 or 50 trailers, each of which has about 2 megawatt-hours of power inside, each collected within a 24-hour period on the road as it pulled into town. And therefore, we have 100 megawatts, megawatt-hours of capacity of power here that literally we can send anywhere that needs this energy. That could be in the town, but it could be outside the town. It could be in a disaster zone. It could be someplace that just had a hurricane or tornadoes or whatever you might wish, or simply when the grid has a problem during peak loading, during summers, during the winters, when the grid goes down and people need energy. So we can also feed those buildings in that town. Let's go to the next slide because it kind of breaks down the grid a little. Think of, this is, this is, this is that same shot from above, and you've got the baseball stadium there in the bottom left, and you've got, you know, those buildings around the train station there. And each one can become a micro grid where we can feed energy to city-owned buildings, private businesses, hospitals, schools, et cetera, in Amarillo or outside the bounds of Amarillo where such energy might be needed. And this is what we're doing in St. Paul, where our goal is to win St. Paul. We're bidding Chicago here shortly. And our goal is to come from north on the train lines through Chicago and Atlanta, down through Texas and Florida, so that we become a significant provider of clean energy in the United States. And in each segment of that, replacing slowly, but replacing diesel-powered school buses for the kids with electric school buses, which we provide. I'll just do a couple more slides, and I think that's the basic idea of what we are. That's, so this is the example of a trailer, a flatbed trailer. On top of that goes a container, which is already in existence. Every component of our system, whether it be the, the generation of electricity or the storage in batteries or the transmission of it, is an off-the-shelf item purchased. There are no scientific leaps of any form in our business. There are no scientific leaps of any form in our business. The fact that we got our patents is amazing. It took four years because they kept saying this is way too simple to attach an alternator to an axle to capture energy and send it to a battery. You can't have been the first, but after four years, they all gave up and gave us the patent. So, you know, brilliant idea. Go to the next one. And that's a train car, I think, on the next one. So our alternators are on the bogies of this train car on the bottom. So think of it where it's circled there. And in that train, we have containers on top with battery packs. Those battery packs can be removed from the train car or stay on there. Train car pulls into the station, plugs right into the system or into the electric grid itself, either one. And we download that energy. So let's go to the next one. This is something that I think could be of great help to this area, meaning the Panhandle, meaning generally the southwest of the United States, but other places, certainly the southeast because of the hurricanes. So this is a train car that has one container, or the two containers on top, holding batteries to the left. And on the right is a data center. So we have the capability of transmitting data as well as energy to places that need it under duress. We have recently just, in fact, made a proposal to the U.S. Department of Transportation to do emergency services around the country. And we're in an early discussion in the state of Florida to do the same. So this is the idea of what we are. We have other slides, but I don't think we need to mention it. But I will mention this, especially with some of the earlier comments. So we consider ourselves in a business of public-private partnership. We want to make cities better places. And there's a way of sharing the wealth that's created by that. And in St. Paul, as an example, we have in our contract with them, we will pay them one cent per kilowatt-hour for every kilowatt-hour that's sold into the city's area, into that geographic area. In the case of St. Paul, that involves, in the projection between train cars and trailers, about 150 vehicles. And at that level of activity, we generate for the city of St. Paul about $500,000 a year in the fifth year, which is money that we contribute to the city's pension funds to help pay them down. Now, the city could choose to use the money elsewhere, but the teachers, the firemen, and the policemen are pretty good cause, we think. And we would offer the same to the city of Amarillo as our partner. And so I repeat, we are asking for no money. We'd like to pay you some money. We'd like you to be our partner and help us to integrate ourselves into your city. And with that, I thank you all for the time. And believe me, you live in an incredibly beautiful and wonderful place here. So we're happy to be here. Thank you.
Craig, thank you very much. We feel very honored to have you and your company and your team in our city. We're very humbled to be a part of this project. And Rich, do you want to give us just an update then on where we are on that?
Sure. So we've signed a letter of intent, which there's no financial commitment either way there. But what we've decided we're going to work together on is we're starting with solid waste. So every day, what is it, seven? Seven, we have seven semis that move trash from the transfer station out to the dump. What's that, a 32-mile round trip? So the brute question is, can we generate power with those trips? That we're not, we're going to do them anyway. Can we generate power and then use that power to charge vehicles? And by doing so, drop the fuel costs that we're spending every year just to move trash? We're starting small, and then we'll move from there. You know, there will be many opportunities to expand that and generate more power that we can use to power our own vehicles. So in the end, the goal is to drive down our costs and become self-sufficient when it comes to transportation. Do I leave anything out?
You know, I like to say there are exciting things happening in solid waste.
There are.
And this would be one of them, right?
I wouldn't be exaggerating to say we have the most innovative solid waste department in government.
That's quite a statement, Donnie. Under your leadership, we very much appreciate you and your team.
Any questions?
Questions, council? I mean, this is exciting, innovative.
Yes, please.
Yes, yes, please, questions? Councilmember Stanley?
Yeah, so many. So thank you for your kind words. And I agree with you. We do live in a great city. You're around some of the best people. And so thank you for that. Primarily, I'm curious on download. So Excel's a large provider here. We have power lines. Are you going to try to enter into contracts with them and be able to push electricity through existing infrastructure? Or does your business revolve around new infrastructure?
It's a great question. There are no dumb questions normally, but that's a great one anyway. So luckily, we have discussions going on in Minneapolis-St. Paul, our first city. And out of coincidence, their power company is Excel. So I've personally met with Excel many times. And we're working on things together. And we would expect and hope to do that here as well. So we have the choice. The technology is very simple of downloading into a micro grid so that the energy can be consumed in a piece of the city, in a building, in a geographic area, or straight into the grid. To go straight into the grid, we need a partner on the power side. And so Excel would be our perfect partner here to help us do that. And so the process is not difficult. It's very, these trailers that you saw on my slides contain all of the AC/DC transmission conversion. Literally, you pull it right up, charge a car, charge a building. So that part is all in very good shape engineering-wise. But we would hope to have an Excel as a partner here. If we didn't, we would, you know, focus on micro grids and not on putting power into the grid. But our optimal example is to help them balance the grid in times when they need more power so they don't have to spend money to build more power facilities. And in other times, we're taking power from the grid to move it somewhere else. That's the optimal situation for us.
Not to monopolize the time here, but quickly, how long do you keep these charges? And if you were to offload in a little micro grid, we're using the power, sustainability, what do you lose?
Yeah, so we lose about, in a battery of these type, these are lithium-ion batteries. And we would lose about 5%, roughly 5% of the power of that battery in one month's time. So our general goal is to move the power in less than one month and lose nothing. But if it sits there for a while, think of a Tesla car or something like that, right? It can sit there for quite some time before you start to worry about that. But it's about 5% per month. But remember, in our case, that battery, that container is on a trailer or a train car. If we just take it back on the road, it goes back to 100%.
Do you have any contracts with Excel or BNSF?
No. Well, so contacts or contracts?
Contracts. Anything with?
Yeah, not yet. But we're in discussions. In fact, we leave here tomorrow to fly to Minneapolis, and we're meeting with Excel over there. So we're hopeful of that. And in BNSF, that is an ideal train partner for us. And what we're asking from the city is to make contacts for us and allow us to, you know, to easily access what we need to make this happen. An introduction to BNSF would be highly valued by us. So we would love it if you could do that for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? Nothing. Councilmember Smith?
No question, but this is very exciting, potential.
It is. It is very exciting.
I'm following this.
I do think in conversations prior to the meeting that they see opportunity for other growth here in Amarillo. And it comes down to something we're proud of. It's an asset that few cities of our nation have. And it's our central location. You know, we are on I-40, which is truly heartbeat of east-west travel of goods. And we've recently, Congress just recently approved I-27 as a new interstate highway to go north-south, all the way from the plains, I'm sorry, from the ports in southern Texas to Canada. So we will be the crossing point for two of the nation's greatest interstate highways. And, you know, it'll take a few years to put that in place. We won't say decades, we'll say years. But I think it's a very strategic choice on your part to look at Amarillo to be a part of the growth of this potential industry that could change the world, not just our nation. So, well done, well done. I had another question I was going to ask you guys, but can't remember now what it was. We appreciate that you're here. We look forward to meeting you every time, welcoming you every time you come to the city. Rich, I know what it was. I was going to put Ronnie Walker on the spot. Ronnie, would you and your team be willing to step out with these guys and just handshake and hello to put a local face on our Excel presence? They're actually in our meeting today, Craig, so I just thought we might put them on the spot. And y'all could at least have a hello so then as you begin to make contacts and meet, you would have seen some local faces. Okay, thank you all very much for that presentation. Thank you, Rich. Moving on to Item 1E is a quarterly budget update. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, we have Director of Finance Debbie Reed here to give us the item. Lots of good news.
Good afternoon, Mayor. And members of council. So today, we're going to talk about the first six months of the fiscal year. And I believe you have this information in your packets there in front of you. So we're going to start out with the general fund, like we usually do. The general fund, of course, is the main operating fund of the city. So our fiscal year is October through September. So we're talking about October through March. So for the first six months, we have budgeted revenues of $121.2 million. Our actual revenues have come in at $126.7 million, giving us a positive variance of $5.5 million in our revenues. And we'll look at what makes up that variance on the next slide. So here you can see that property tax revenues are $1.6 million over budget. Sales tax, $5.6 million. Hotel occupancy tax, about $900,000 over budget. Gross receipts tax, about $700,000 over budget. And then you see charges for services under budget, about $100,000. Fines under budget by $200,000. And then interest income and other categories of revenues under budget by $3 million. So we'll dive into the details of the sales tax, hotel occupancy tax, and gross receipts tax on the next few slides. I'll just mention on the property tax side, that's typically that our collection rate has been better than what was projected. So that's good for the city of Amarillo. So on the next slide, we'll look into the sales tax collections. And council, you receive monthly reporting each time we receive our deposits each month from the state. So our sales tax revenues continue to be strong having come out of COVID over the last couple of years. We have 13.9% more than last year and 17.86% more than what we budgeted for the current year. So we continue to be strong in this area. We're $4.4 million over budget year-to-date, or over last year, year-to-date. And I think Andrew will give you a little bit more details in his report, which is coming up next. On the hotel occupancy tax side, we show you this slide just for a 10-year history. We've shown this to you before. That's just in there for your reference. It does show the impact of COVID there in 2020 with that large decrease. And then we rebounded well coming out of COVID. And we're kind of seeing the sales tax beyond the increase, but expecting that it will level out over the next year. This slide shows you the hotel occupancy tax collections for the current year through March. And you can see that for the fiscal year, we are 29.47% more than last year through March, and then 29.55% more than budget through March. And that's what this slide here shows you. On the hotel occupancy tax, we also like to show you this in a graphical form. So here, the bars on the chart are the actual revenues of last year, the actual year-to-date revenues for this year. And the green is the budget for this year. So you can see this year, we're exceeding last year's actual and the budgeted amounts for each month. The line in the chart here are the occupancy rates. And you can see that around November, the occupancy rates for the current year are trending down. And, but the revenues are staying strong. And I had a good conversation with Cashin today from CBB. And the hoteliers are kind of, they have reworked their model for setting their rates. And so that's holding the revenues stable for the city of Amarillo and making them strong for the hotel owners and motel owners in the city. So here, next we'll talk about gross receipts business tax or franchise fees. These are fees that we charge businesses that run their lines through our city, our city right-of-way. So the types and rates are noted here for your reference. And on the next slide, we'll look at our actual collections through March for the fiscal year. So for the year, the total gross receipts tax are $645,000 ahead of budget, or 7%. And then you can see the main areas where we're over budget are electricity and gas for the franchise fees. Next, we'll look at general fund expenses. And here, the departments typically will try to spread their budget over the months of the fiscal year. So we're looking at just the spending. The budget through the month of March was budgeted at $105.4 million. Actual has come in at $97 million, giving us a positive variance of $8.4 million. We talked about this after the first quarter, that the main reason for this variance are vacancies in our departments. So that is about half of the variance is due to those staffing vacancies, which has really become a big issue for the city employment, but also many of our business owners in the community as well. Some of the other areas, supplies and contractual services, are both under budget. Supplies, it's mainly, we have some supply issues, getting the supply chain items, not getting things on a timely basis. We have some things in our supply category that were budgeted in the earlier months, but they haven't been expended yet. And on the contractual services side, it's the same thing. Some of it's just timing of audit fees or software maintenance fees. Maybe they were anticipated to be spent in the first six months, but those expenditures haven't incurred. We fully anticipate that half of this variance will be spent by the end of the fiscal year due to those timing differences. So really, the main variance here would be those staffing vacancies to the tune of about $4.1 million. So then we look at the general fund net variance overall. So with our positive revenue variance of $5.5 million, the expense variance of $8.4 million, through March, we have a total net variance of $13.9 million. And remember, I'm saying that about $4 million of that would be spent by the end of the fiscal year due to those timing differences in supplies and contractual services. So on our utility side, for utility sales,[1614.88] and contractual services. So on our utility side, for utility sales, this would be through the month of March, we'll look at the, in the general fund, we have the solid waste category, and solid waste fees are slightly ahead of budget at $207,000 for the year. In our water sewer fund, water sales are $1.4 million or 6% ahead of budget, and sewer sales are $466,000 or 4% ahead of budget. As you know, we have a very dry year going on, so our water consumption levels are up. So that's, that's good for the water sewer fund, but we do need rain. We really need rain. So the drainage fund is pretty much on target with budget, just slightly under at $33,000. We always show you this chart as well for reference. It just shows the past 10 years' history, and it just shows that impact of the rain levels in the environment that, that impact the water sewer sales. That's just for your reference. And our last slide is on health insurance. This is our medical claims expense throughout the year that we keep track of. And here, the city, this shows a 10-year history of the claims expense and administrative fees. The last two bars on the right are for this fiscal year, the budget and the actual. And we are slightly ahead of budget, about $900,000. And we keep a close watch on that, especially as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. Our health advisor firm, they help us to kind of monitor the claims, and we look at projections to the end of the year. So we make any adjustments through the revised estimates, and then what we would expect going into the next budget year. So with that, council, I would answer any questions you might have about the first six months of the fiscal year.
Debbie, what adjustments are y'all looking at as far as health insurance is concerned? That's always the one that makes me, it just makes me nervous. It feels like there's a lot of potential for variables there that aren't in our control.
That is very true. I mean, we, a city, a city or any employer can have a high claims year in the drop of a hat, really. At this point, our health advisors are projecting maybe a 10% increase into next year. Being self-insured has its advantages. We can tend to keep our costs down. Where maybe other employers might be experiencing 15% to 20% type increases year over year, they're projecting maybe we would have around a 10% increase at this point. But still, still expecting that we would end the year within budget for this current fiscal year.
Okay. And I assume in working the new budget numbers that y'all are proposing, you're putting that into consideration?
Yes, ma'am. We will have that in the budget proposals for council to consider.
Other questions about the budget? Very thorough presentation. We appreciate getting these updates regularly. It really does help us stay on top of not, you know, our next time to talk about it really will be Budget Workshop in July, and that'll be here before we know it. So that's something that we started new about four and a half years ago, getting these quarterly updates, and just helps us have a better hold on how last year's budget is proceeding, especially as we go into making next year's budget decisions. So we appreciate you and all your team, all the work you do.
Thank you.
Coming to the podium is Andrew Freeman to give us a sales tax update.
Yes, ma'am. So this is to supplement Debbie's presentation with just some more current, up-to-date numbers on how sales tax is performing, since that's such a crucial part of the budget, to keep an eye on that. So what I've got are a few slides, a little more than, than typical, just because we have noticed a little change in our retail category, which is our, our largest collection of sales tax. So this slide at the top shows January through May, basically year-to-date data, which you'll see are all positive. Retail's performing 9.59% is our largest one. Another one we typically look at is food, which is a little over 16%. So year-to-date, performing well. What we're seeing, as you can see down below, I also took a look at our top 100 taxpayers, which I did last time, and, and brought a little bit more than, than previously. We looked at all industries, top 100 taxpayers, which is the largest of our, our collections. January through May, 12.32%. May for the month, 7.14%. Back in March, during my last update, the top 100 was sitting around 14%. So that has come down just a, just a little bit. But when I was able to pull our top 100 taxpayers for the retail category alone, that's when we see in May, they've actually declined for the first time since June 2020. So they are negative 1.38% for our top 100 retail taxpayers. For comparison, down below that is food, which is still performing well at 12.28%. The other information I've included is, is some new data that our Zactax, third-party company that helps with our confidential data, they, they've started including the inflation rate each month, and showing what the adjusted collections might look like in any given month based on that inflation rate. And what this shows on, on May is a negative 6.1%. So if it weren't for inflation, we would have brought in 561,000 less than the previous May 2021. So just to give you an idea of some months without inflation, we would have actually declined in sales tax instead of our 22 months of sales tax increases. So that just gives a little more understanding of how the economy and inflation has impacted some of those numbers. Looking at May, as Debbie mentioned, was up 3.96%. What we've seen in the current year budget, that is our lowest increase so far. So our other lowest one, you'd have to go up to 8.49%. And then we also saw increases in the 14%, 17%, 27% range. So just cautionary that we are starting to see the impacts of the, of the economy here in Amarillo, perhaps, which is something we're going to try and keep an eye on with our confidential data moving forward, just to track those trends. On this slide is the, the May month in particular, which is March sales, which is typically our, one of our highest months. We saw negative 4.47% in retail, and that's 43% of the collection. So that's something we're going to watch moving forward. As far as the subset categories that make up that category and some of the other declines that we're seeing, electronics and appliances were down 11%, clothing accessories down just under 10%, sporting goods, hobbies, and books down 15%, general merchandise 8%, non-store retailers, which is the online sales, was down 6%, which is not very common to see a decline in that one. And then miscellaneous stores down 7%. Putting a little more into context, though, as far as the 3% increase for the month of May, May 2021 was actually up 30%, which we believe is one of our largest year-to-year increases in that month, due in part based on the pandemic. May 2020, we were down negative 6%. So that number is really in the 20s as far as making up ground from the loss, losses during the pandemic. And then lastly, I just wanted to touch on the labor force statistics for April 2022. For the MSA, we are sitting at an unemployment rate of 2.5%. I had to go back to early 2020 to see an unemployment rate that low, which, which as we say, usually isn't, isn't a good sign. We want it to be a little higher to show we have those jobs and that employment base, but we are sitting at 2.5%, which is a decrease of a little over 1% for the year. We have added 1,487 jobs to the labor force and had added 31 to employed, the employed category. As far as some highlights of the employment by industry, yearly change, everyone is either flat or seeing growth. Just wanted to point out retail trade, transportation utilities up 3.5%, and then the leisure and hospitality category up for the year 6.7. As far as monthly, we only saw a few that were declining, one being government. Retail trade down just over 1%, and then manufacturing just under a percent down for the month. Those are the highlights, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, questions for Andrew? Yes, Councilmember Stanley?
Mr. Freeman, how much caution are you warranting here with, with looking at this trend and seeing this turn, and also seeing the inflationary rate go up substantially?
It's, since we do get these, it's two months after the fact, so these are March sales. So it's tough to be too cautionary until we get a few more months of data where we actually see it consistently dropping. We would, of course, like to see that inflation rate come down, but this month would have been two months ago, so that was before some of these federal rate increases. So hopefully, our next, our next month, we'll see that number come down and see it trending in the direction. But I think it just takes time to see if those trends will stay or if it'll reverse course. But overall, we're still seeing positive sales to the good each month. So until we see that change, I don't know if there's too much to be cautious about as far as, of course, as the budget goes, we've got surplus and as far as that's concerned.
It's a little hard to track with the, the previous report looking so good. $13 million.
Right. And this is more of a future look, because this is more current data.
This would give us a better understanding of maybe trends. That would give us more of a cash-on-hand outlook. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Andrew, we appreciate that you analyze and keep an eye on this data for us, bring us an update quarterly. Again, just helps us have a better visibility on what's happening in the budget that affects our budget decisions. Certainly, we have some hard decisions coming up in July, so thank you. Final item in the first part of our discussion agenda, council, is 1G, requesting future agenda items and reports from the city manager. Do we have anything anybody wants to request?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Hearing nothing, then. Let's move on to the consent portion of the agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to come off for further discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, yes, we do. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by the mayor pro temp and seconded by council member Sauer to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. What? Oh, about the sidewalks? Yes, that's great, Catherine. You can be excited about that. That's wonderful. Okay, moving on to the action agenda. Item 3A is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 7981. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We've got Brady Kendrick, Planner 2, here to present. Well, this item and most, the, he's going to be the most prolific presenter during our non-consent session. So Brady, take this one away.
That'd be the Brady Show.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing. It's to consider the rezoning of Lot 71, Block 19, Westover Park, Unit Number 27. In addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 31, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from agricultural district to moderate-density district. The vicinity is Colter Street and Pinnacle Drive, and the applicant is Rick Enns for First United Methodist Church. Adjacent zoning consists of residential District 1 to the north and east, and agricultural district in all other directions. Adjacent land uses consist of Westover Park Junior High to the north, single-family homes to the east, and undeveloped land in all other directions. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning in order to develop the tract with a 16-unit assisted living facility. The Planning and Zoning Commission weighs various planning principles, such as the future land use and character maps, and neighborhood unit concept of development, and existing zoning and development patterns in the area when considering a request. The future land use map identifies the applicant's tract as being in the suburban commercial category. This category calls for commercial, retail, institutional, and service uses at varying scales depending on the site. The Planning and Zoning Commission is of the opinion that the applicant's request is compatible with both, with the recommended types of development and the surrounding residential areas as proposed uses, and those allowed in moderate-density or residential in nature. When considering the request as it pertains to the neighborhood unit concept, it's the Planning and Zoning Commission's opinion that the request for moderate-density at this location could provide the recommended transition that would serve as a buffer for single-family residential east of the applicant's tract from the uses in zoning that will likely be non-residential adjacent to Colter Street. Considering this, the commission was of the opinion that the request does conform. Notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet as required by state law. As of this meeting, the planning department did receive five comments regarding the request. Of those five, two expressed no opposition, and three expressed opposition. And they expressed the following concerns: high bankruptcy statistics associated with assisted living facilities, property values being affected negatively, vandalism and vagrancy if the structure were to become vacant, and concerns about increase in traffic in the area. Considering all the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request as presented with a unanimous vote.
Council, do you have any questions for Brady? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3A, ordinance number 7981. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item? You'll have three minutes to come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for item 3A.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7981, which authorizes the rezoning of Lot 71, Block 19, Westover Park, Unit Number 27. In addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 31, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from agricultural district to moderate-density district in the vicinity of Colter Street and Pinnacle Drive.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Temp Powell and seconded by council member Stanley to approve ordinance number 7981. Any questions or discussion about the motion, council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3B?
Item 3B is a public hearing to consider the rezoning of portions of Tracts 8, 9, and 12, CR Austin subdivision of the east and south parts of Section 4, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from residential District 1 and agricultural district to residential District 3. The vicinity is Scotty Drive and Santa Fe Trail, and the applicant is Barry Christie. Adjacent zoning consists of agricultural district to the south and residential District 1 in all other directions. Adjacent land uses consist of single-family detached homes to the north, east, and west, and a church to the south. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning in order to develop the tract with 49 single-family detached homes on lots that are an average size of 6,330 square feet. The applicant has stated that an average home size will be approximately 2,200 square feet. It should be noted that a zoning change for the property to moderate-density district was previously submitted and considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission in December of 2020. Ultimately, it was withdrawn by the landowner at that time due to concern from the surrounding residences that multifamily land uses would be allowed in moderate-density if approved and would have had negative impacts to the area. Since the 2020 request, the applicant is now, the applicant now requesting a change, purchased the property, and is requesting residential District 3 with the understanding of the previous concerns expressed during the 2020 request. The applicant has an approved preliminary plan for the proposed subdivision, and this zoning is the next part of the development process for the developer. The future land use and character map identifies the applicant's tract as being mostly within the general residential category. The south 125 feet of the tract is located within the suburban commercial category. The general residential category calls for detached residential dwellings being the primary focus, and the suburban commercial category calls for retail and service-related land uses. The proposed development type of single-family detached homes and the requested zoning would be in line with the general residential category. As mentioned previously, the south 125 feet is suburban commercial. However, the planning commission believes that the applicant's proposed land use is more appropriate given its location, as there is a church located immediately south of the applicant's tract, and retail or service-type land uses between residential and institutional use would not be an ideal development pattern. Regarding the neighborhood unit concept of development, when examining the development patterns in the area, residential District 3 at the applicant's location, in the planning commission's opinion, would be a recommended development type. The proposed type of residential development would serve as a buffer between the church and its associated external activities to the larger residential lots found west and north of the tract, as the applicant's tract is located on the periphery of the subdivision as it has been built out. Regarding density, it is noted that the developer is proposing 49 residential lots for this subdivision. When looking at the minimum lot size requirements for R1, R2, or R3, the number of lots that could theoretically be developed using those minimum lot size requirements would be 41, 52, or 62 respectively. It is worth noting that the traffic engineer believes that the current traffic volumes do not warrant any further traffic mitigation in the area, and that an additional 49 residences would not result in any negative impacts on traffic patterns in the area as they exist currently. The city encourages appropriate infield development when possible. This request represents one of those opportunities in the planning commission's opinion. Based on the above, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the request is a logical continuation of existing zoning and development patterns in the area. Notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet as required by state law, and as of this meeting, 16 comments have been received regarding the request, with 15 being in opposition. It is worth noting that a written protest was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The protest represented 94 individual lots in the surrounding area. Of those 94 lots, 12 were within the 200-foot notice area. This amounts to 22.5% of the notice area opposing the request, and as such represents a valid protest. Considering that the valid protest has been submitted, the requested rezoning can only be passed by a vote of three-fourths of all members of city council. It also must be noted that while the protest documents did state that the property is to be rezoned in residential District 3, it did include language that stated residential District 3 zoning allows for apartments, multifamily, and moderate-density development. Such uses are not allowed in residential District 3. A summary of the concerns expressed include the following: They did not want adjacent trees on the tract to be rezoned to be removed once the tract is developed. They would no longer be able to utilize the tract to be rezoned in the course of backing in and out of a home adjacent to the applicant's site. Concerns about the density of new single-family detached home development and the increased traffic that would result. If condos or apartments were constructed, they were concerned about crime traffic and decreased property values. Concerns about the potential development of apartments on this tract. However, single-family detached homes were acceptable to this caller. Concerns that homes will be rental properties. Concerns with Caramel Avenue no longer being a cul-de-sac as the developer intends to continue the street eastward. And it is noted that Caramel Avenue was dedicated with the intent for it to be continued eastward upon development east of that subdivision. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the request is a logical continuation of existing land uses and represents appropriate zoning district given the area. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request as presented with a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Brady. Council, do we have questions for Brady before we do a public hearing? Brady, will you just break down for me again the difference between R1 and R3? Brady, will you just break down for me again the difference between R1 and R3?
Yes, so R1, your, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet, and R3 does 5,000 square feet for your minimum lot size for a residential home. And there's also some setback differences as well.
Okay. But as far as multifamily dwelling units, the differences between R1 and R3?
Neither allow for multifamily development.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on Agenda Item 3B, Ordinance Number 7982. If you are here to speak for, on, or against this agenda item, you may have three minutes at the podium to do so. Could I see a show of hands as to who's present to speak on this item? One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, six of you? Am I counting right, Stephanie?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Well, I think that's, if y'all don't mind, we'll just let you each step up, and as you get to the microphone, if you could clearly state your name, please, so we can record that accurately, and whether or not you are a citizen of the Amarillo City, of the City of Amarillo, and if you live inside the city limits. And at that time, they'll start your timer, and you'll have three minutes. There's always one brave soul who has to go first. Thank you for getting us started.
I know. Well, I once had a friend, my name is Steve Thurman.
Do you reside in Amarillo, Steve?
I had a friend one time, and I've lived in Amarillo for close to 30 years. And this has been a really great neighborhood for us to live in, and I hate to see it be developed. I know it's going to happen, but it is what it is. Once had a good friend that told me, you get 100% of what you don't ask for. That's pretty good advice. In the beginning, this neighborhood voted down the R3, which you've already been through designation. It was, somebody backed it off. I told Mr. Christie, I'm the one that sold Mr. Christie the land, and with the understanding that it would be R1. Okay? He's pulled a fast one on me, and he's, and now he's wanting to go to R3, which is more homes. I was kind of naive in doing this, you know? This is not something I do a lot of. As I said in the last meeting, I gained a new respect for door knockers when I was gathering signatures, because that's a hard, it's harder than it looks. We gathered just shy of 200 signatures in a couple of days. Given another week, we could probably quadruple that number. 200 is only a small sample of the people that feel as we do. Not one person I spoke with wants this R3 designation. City View, Gene Howe, and Arden Road are already overcrowded. Folks whose home faces Scotty cannot exit their drives and let kids play in the yard because of traffic now. Add 50 to 100 more cars per day, which with the people and their circle of friends, and it's going to be a whole lot worse. This is far worse for me, because 75 feet from my door, I'm going to have four to five yards, and every time I exit my front door, there's going to be yapping dogs, and I will have no privacy. Okay? Mr. Christie's representative told you he was not able to make a profit on our, on the R1 designation. Does anybody really believe that? Come on. As in our president says, "Come on, man." So I ask you, so my question is, so do we ask, are we converting this to R3 for the benefit of the longstanding taxpayers in the neighborhood, or are we padding the pockets of one developer? Last question, you know, would any one of you, would any one of you vote for this to be across the street from you? We are not asking for much here. We all understand that this is going to happen, but bigger lots mean better quality neighbors and more established homes and families. Nine less homes is what they tell us. My math tells me more like 14, but is, I don't know if that's accounted to roads or whatever. But please consider our request and pray for wisdom and empathy before you make your vote. I appreciate your time, Mayor. Counsel?
Thank you, sir. Do we have another speaker on Item 3B?
I live in this same area as this gentleman that was before me, and I just do not believe that we need that extra traffic in that area there. And with all these houses being built there, it's kind of puts the rest of us in a bind. And I would just say, ask that the City Commission look at this seriously and really dwell on trying to do what's better for the City of Amarillo. And I am vehemently against it, and I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another speaker on this item? Ma'am, she's welcome to come to the podium with you. That would be a great learning experience, yeah.
My name's Melanie Cameron. I live in the neighborhood also. I live next to the land, and one of the requests that the kids have is, they have requested the trees not be cut down. Our neighbors live next door to us. They were the first ones in the neighborhood that built their house, first house there, and they've been there since they've been there, almost 30 years. And so the things that we would request are the safety of the kids, people not bypassing the school zone, because we've had people come from the church down through Carmel and didn't realize it was an street, and they try to cut through, and then they have to turn back around. We don't want front yard trash. We bought our neighborhood on a covenant that started January 1st of 2008 on the restrictions of knowing that they were back side or back garages, and knowing that you can't put fences up, or you can't, you know, all the trash things are in the back of the alleys and stuff. So just knowing that we had restrictions there that we had to follow by. There's no room in the schools, there's no room for growth in the schools. I have one kid that goes to City View and a couple that go to Gene Howe, but I've also had to have my son go to Sundown when we first moved, because there was no room for children in the elementary. And we live right there, but we had to commute or get transfers because there's no room. And the school was trying to put a pre-K, but there's no room in the school for kids. They are bursting out of their walls, out of three elementary schools, and Arden Road also right up the road. So even though it's Canyon I C, it falls in the city limits, and we're still struggling with room for our kids to go to school. We do not want R1 to R3, just because adding more, it's more of a struggle for our kids to get into school. That's another thing. We want our neighborhood safe. We really, the neighborhood, everybody on Carmel does not want it through a street, and they called in to the city and expressed that during the planning zoning. We take pride in our neighborhood. We would like a crossing guard for the kids. A lot of kids walk home, and there's no crossing guard with a lot of traffic. Let's see, they don't want the trees cut down. We have people that go down the street, we've already covered that. The value of our homes, we don't want it to decrease. If you go to 5,000-square-foot lots, our house sits on a 6,500-square-foot lot. Most of the streets are 6,500 to 7,000-square-foot lots, and some of them don't have big yards. We do, because we have a double lot. But most people have a small backyard, and if you go to 5,000-square-foot, you're pretty much building a garden home with no yard. So you're going to have people that are going to rent, or elderly people that may move in, and some may come in and go, well, we don't want this, and we're going to move out. Pretty much, they had the traffic stripped down when they say it didn't make a difference. They only had it down for a day and a half, and they had it down on a Tuesday, Wednesday morning, and then it was picked up and gone. It was not during peak hours of Fridays, Sundays, or Saturdays when people are going in and out. So those are our biggest concerns, and safety for the kids, and just room for the kids to be able to go to school without having to be transferred every year out of their school district. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you joined your mom at the podium. Takes a lot of courage to just stand up there. Do we have another speaker who wishes to speak for, on, or against Item 3B?
I am not a citizen of the City of Amarillo. I am the engineer of record for this project, and I was going to address a couple of the more technical items on this project. As Brady did a very good job presenting both sides of the issues there. The traffic that has been a concern on Scotty is a concern today, has nothing to do with this development. This development makes minimal impact overall on that. Talked to the developer, and we talked about the trees. If it's possible that we can build the subdivision, and there's no conflict with the public improvements, he'll leave the trees there as much as possible. The issue of Carmel Avenue being a cul-de-sac, it is not, today, it is not a cul-de-sac. It's a dead-end road, and the dead-end road would not meet any current requirements of the City of Amarillo, especially the fire marshal. And when we're talking about keeping people safe, we need to have a place for the fire trucks to get down the road, make the appropriate turnarounds, make the appropriate turns. So we feel like from that aspect, this subdivision is an improvement to that situation. So, any other technical issues that I can answer for the council? I'd be glad to do so.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes, sir. So, traffic, I know, is one of the big issues. It does bring a safety concern, and I understand there may not be a lot of consideration given when Trinity Fellowship lets a church service out of several thousand people, and we're talking about 40 to 50 new home, 49 new homeowners. Is there anything that could be considered for traffic? Do you, have you quantified anything? Are you looking at that in the way of like, what would be Lamont or Scotty for any kind of traffic controls? It would be helpful just to slow down the speed?
So from a developer's standpoint, the City of Amarillo Traffic Department is responsible for traffic engineering and traffic controls. So we are required to meet these subdivision ordinance requirements, which at this point we have done.
But you did do a traffic study, or you did not do it?
We're not required to do a traffic study. We rely on what the traffic engineers told us that this would have negligible impact on the overall traffic of the area.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you had done a traffic study as part of your due diligence. So, okay, thank you.
Other questions, counsel? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other speakers?
I'm the developer on the project. I just wanted to make a few comments that, in regard to, into the proposed project, I think everybody is aware that we have a housing shortage in Amarillo, and we have a shortage of affordable housing, especially in the new home market. And our goal in requesting the R3 designation is to be able to bring in a product at a value, but also nice homes, fully brick homes that are well-restricted and things, but to bring them in at a value that is unobtainable right now. And what I've had to do as a builder-developer is I've had to go out and find, and I have done several of these projects, I've been before y'all before, I having to go out and seeking out these small infill tracks like this, and then developing them myself, and then that allows me to put a product on the market at a more affordable rate, but with keeping the quality to the standard that it is. One of the differences between R1 and R3, it would eliminate about eight residences, which is not a huge number in the overall scope of everything, but it would probably, most probably push the cost of those residents up by about $15,000. And I mean, we're all aware of what everything that's going on in housing, the costs have gone up so dramatically, and I'm just, I'm trying, this whole project is aimed at being able to put, obviously, I want to make money, that's what I do, but I want to be able to put a product on that is a high-quality, new homes, putting new inventory into the market, which we desperately need, at an affordable value. And, quite frankly, you know, that, something will be happening with this track at some point in time, and it's just the most logical thing for it is, is to be single-family homes. It just, that's what it fits, that's what's around it, that makes the most sense. And I would address one other thing, too, and I would say, you know, my intent is, you know, the size of these homes is going to be very consistent with everything in the neighborhood. They'll be all brick, it's going to be a fully restricted area. And the other thing is, I plan on building all 50 at once. I'm not, this is not going to be a long, drawn-out project. I think the demand is incredible right now, the need is incredible, and we are in a position where we can do that, and go in, be very professional, quick, and have it. It's not something where it's going to be a long, drawn-out construction process. And I know, I know the trees were mentioned earlier, and I, I'd say, obviously, it's my interest to save any tree I can. I mean, you know, you pay a lot of money for them if I have to put them in. But, but anyway, those are, those are my comments on it, and that's it.
Questions, counsel? Mr. Christie, if you don't mind just a minute, we might have some questions. That's okay. It's just great for you to be here. We appreciate you making yourself available.
Oh, absolutely.
I think the trees are an important issue, so just, I mean, Amarillo ones are funny about their trees.
Yep.
I guess because we have so few of them, but they are important to families, and they are important to kids, and we want neighborhoods with trees in them.
Absolutely.
So I very much appreciate hearing you say that you're listening to the importance of those trees. Any other questions from the council for Mr. Christie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
May I ask Mr. Christie a question?
Well, actually, if you don't mind addressing it to us, then we'll, sure.
Are these homes going to be two-story homes or what?
Okay, well...
That plays into privacy issues.
Uh-huh, sure.
So, that would be my question.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, ma'am. Mr. Christie, if you want to think on that in just a minute, we'll address that question back to you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Kathleen Williamson. I work with Barry Christie. I've worked with him for about seven years. What I would like to speak on this, I've actually attended all of the other meetings where the people who spoke against it, and, you know, Barry has been, you know, he's been a builder in the Amarillo area for over 35 years. He's helped thousands and thousands of families be able to purchase homes that are affordable, and that is still his goal today. That's his purpose of this project. He looked at it very closely before he moved forward. This is, you know, it's landlocked, so it's a very complicated piece of land to try to figure out the proper way to use it. And like he said, the only, the difference between an R1 and R3 will be about eight homes, and so that's really not going to have a big impact on, you know, the traffic and what people are concerned about, but it does have an impact on the cost for the homeowners who will be purchasing it. These will be, again, comparable to the homes in the community. They'll be designed, you know, brick and very modern and nice, and they will actually increase the value of the other homes in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, thanks. Mr. Christie, do you have a quick answer to that question about whether the homes will be single-story or two-story? Sorry, I can't see when you're behind the podium.
Yes, all the plans that we currently have are single-story.
Okay.
Yes, and we are, this will be a planned project where we'll have multiple floor plans, but everything will be submitted at one time, and it's, like I said, it's not an ongoing thing, but we have no plans for any two-story.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Brady, any final comments? Okay, it's this time. Are there any other speakers who want to speak for, on, or against Item 3B? We'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance Number 7982, which authorizes the rezoning of portions of Tracts 8, 9, and 12, CR Austin subdivision of the ENS parts of Section 4, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Residential District One and Agricultural District to Residential District Three in the vicinity of Scotty Drive and Santa Fe Trail.
It's been moved by the mayor pro temp and seconded by council member Smith. Do we have discussion or questions about the motion, council? I would just say, from a discussion point of view, that it is, it sways me, the difference, R-3, forty-nine homes, R-1, forty-one. And I do think we have a shortage of homes here in Amarillo. I'm grateful for the way our system works, that people have a chance to come to a microphone and to talk about concerns. Part of being neighbors together doesn't mean that we have to agree on every issue, but you do have the right to say what your opinion is on that issue. And I respect that you took the time to come down. Most of you have been here since one o'clock, so it's a good two hours plus. And I know you've spent other time working in the neighborhood on this issue. And I'm just grateful. I'm grateful for the tone that you came and made your comments. It was very respectful. And I appreciate that you worked through this process. Even, I don't know what the vote is going to be, but even if it's disappointing to you, you were part of the system and part of what makes living in our city and in our nation, really, I think, the best place in the world to live. So, I just wanted to say thank you to you citizens for using the process and using it so respectfully. Any other comments, questions? Okay, at this time, we'll call for a vote on the motion. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five-o vote. Moving on to item 3C. Brady?
Item 3C is a public hearing to consider the rezoning of lots four through eight, Block Forty-One, the Colony's Unit Number Seventy-Five, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section Forty, Block Nine, BS&amp;F survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways, the change from Residential District One to Residential District Three. The vicinity is Continental Parkway South and Colony's Court, and the applicants are Jill Miller, Barry Bedwell for Bedwell's Homes Limited, and Anthony Psychowski. Adjacent zoning consists of Residential District One in all directions. Adjacent land uses consist of undeveloped land and single-family homes to the north, south, and west, and a public improvement district maintained common area to the east. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning in order to be able to utilize a fifteen-foot front yard setback rather than a twenty-five-foot front yard setback that is required in Residential District One. Regarding the future land use and character map, the applicant's tract is identified as being in the Parks and Recreation category. Previously, this site was owned by the Amarillo Independent School District and was proposed to be a school and park site. Since the map's adoption, however, the site was sold and has since been rezoned for single-family land uses. Regarding the neighborhood unit concept, the request would not strictly conform with the concept. The Planning and Zoning Commission does note, however, that a precedent for more dense, single-family development, and reduced setbacks in the interior of this subdivision has been set by Plan Development District Three Seventy-Eight, located two blocks to the west of the applicant's tract. As such, the Planning Commission believes that the applicant's request would not be out of character at this location within the Colony's neighborhood. Considering the applicant's lots also face a Pid green space and are the only lots on the block, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the request would not create a negative situation by which differing setbacks within a block would occur that could result in a negative visual impact. Notices were sent to neighboring property owners as required by state law and no comments have been received as of this meeting. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request as presented.
Any questions for Brady, council? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we will open a public hearing on Agenda Item 3C, Ordinance Number Seventy-Nine Eighty-Three. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against the item may come to the podium and have three minutes to do so. Do we have anyone present who wishes to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing no one, then we will close the public hearing on this item and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance Number Seventy-Nine Eighty-Three, which authorizes the rezoning of lots four through eight, Block Forty-One, the Colony's Unit Number Seventy-Five, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section Forty, Block Nine, BS&amp;F survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Residential District One to Residential District Three in the vicinity of the Continental Parkway South and Colony's Court.
Second.
The mayor pro temp has made the motion and council member Stanley has seconded it. Do we have any discussion or questions about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes with a five-o vote. Item 3D, please, Brady.
Item 3D is a public hearing to consider the rezoning of Lot Eleven, Lot Eleven A, Block One, Sunset Park, Unit Number Five, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section Two Twenty-Six, Block Two, A B&amp;M survey, Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways, the change from Office District One to Office District One with specific use permit for the placement of a carport in the front yard setback. The vicinity is Julian Boulevard and Georgia Street, and the applicant is Greg Bliss for GRV Holdings LLC. Adjacent zoning consists of Residential District Three to the north, Residential District One to the south and west, and Plan Development District Two Thirty-Two to the east. Adjacent land uses consist of a pest control company to the north, a church to the south, an insurance office to the east, and single-family detached homes to the west. The applicant is requesting the change in zoning in order to place a carport within the front yard setback on Julian Boulevard. The lot is developed with a recently constructed dental office. The applicant stated that due to this being a corner lot, having to observe two front yard setbacks impacts the buildable area of the lot. As proposed, the carport would encroach into the front yard setback by approximately three feet. The proposed carport will be constructed in a manner that is consistent with the architecture of the recently completed main building on the lot as proposed by the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission notes that within this immediate area, there are three carports that are located within the front yard setback. Additionally, the Planning and Zoning Commission also notes that there are a number of structures within the immediate area that are observing similar front yard setbacks as requested by the applicant. This includes a professional office building and associated accessory building directly to the east, of which the main building is only ten feet from the adjacent property line, and the accessory building is only fifteen feet from the property line. Additionally, the properties to the north of the applicant are able to enjoy a fifteen-foot front yard setback as they are zoned Residential District Three. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that with the existing structures in the area, observing similar front yard setbacks, if approved, the applicant's carport is not out of character with the area. Additionally, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that due to the minimal encroachment into the setback and the architectural design of the carport as proposed by the applicant, the visual impact to the area will be minimal. Notices were sent to all property owners within two hundred feet as required by state law and no comments have been received as of this meeting. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request as presented.
Any questions for Brady, council? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on Item 3D, Ordinance Number Seventy-Nine Eighty-Four. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may step to the podium and have three minutes to do so. Anyone in the room who wants to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on Item 3D.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance Number Seventy-Nine Eighty-Four, which authorizes the rezoning of Lot Eleven A, Block One, Sunset Park Edition, Unit Number Five, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section Two Twenty-Six, Block Two, A B&amp;M survey, Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Office District One to Office District One with a specific use permit for the placement of a carport in the front yard setback in the vicinity of Julian Boulevard and Georgia Street.
Second.
It's been moved by mayor pro temp and seconded by council member Sauer to approve Item 3D, which is Ordinance Number Seventy-Nine Eighty-Four. Any discussion or questions about the motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes with a five-o vote. I'd like to pause for a minute and just take a bathroom break. So, if we can come back in five or so minutes, then we'll keep working through our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, I think I will call us back into session. Thank you for letting us take a break before we get into this next portion of our agenda. So, Mr. City Manager, we've got Item 3E up, which is to consider approval for a location incentive agreement between the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Producer Owned Beef LLC.
Right, well, we've got Kevin Carter, President, CEO, Amarillo Economic Development Corporation here to talk about an item that council and AEDC and the applicants, P.O. Producers Owned Beef have been working long and hard on, so Kevin, take it away.
Okay. Mayor, council, what a great day today. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the historical things that we've done as an organization. We haven't given a report in a while, so I'm going to kind of give a quarterly report that kind of outlines some of the things that AEDC's been working on. Over the last 10 years, the organizational impact of AEDC is, AEDC has invested $140 million into projects. The prospects or the projects themselves have invested $514 million into our community over the past 10 years. That's 2,607 new jobs that have been created over that 10-year period and 2,005 jobs that have been retained. The annual payroll of those new and retained jobs is over $247 million a year. That's a huge impact to our economy. That's 30 projects over the past 10 years alone. I know one of the, one of the public speakers had a question about just having new projects. On that 30 projects, 13 of those are new, 17 of those are business retention and expansion. 17 companies that are already invested in Amarillo chose to reinvest in Amarillo. Some of those projects are AIG Insurance, Bell Helicopter, Panhandle Pure, XL. We did a project with XL with their headquarters, Golden Spread, and then one of our biggest ones last year was keeping the American Quarter Horse Association here. That was a huge, that's our only world corporate headquarters, and we are very proud to be able to keep them here. Two of our biggest projects over history, year-to-date, not counting today, kind of a little forecast of things to come, the Vet School, $76 million annual economic impact that the Vet School, we did that, approved that project probably about five or six years ago. We just had the ribbon cutting on the Vet School about a month ago. And then, our biggest project to date is Bell Helicopter, $200 million annual economic impact to our economy. Two huge projects, and very important to our economy. But today is a historic day, so council, mayor, put your seat belts on for what we've got coming next. Producer Owned Beef was established to address increasing beef packer margins and the imbalance between fed cattle production and harvesting capacity. Producer Owned Beef is a regionally-created entity that will create new harvesting capacity and give the producers direct access to controlling cattle harvesting. This will strengthen the link between cattle ranchers and consumers. The opportunity, I also, before I get into the opportunity, I want to introduce you to two of the principals that are part of Producer Owned Beef, and that's Casey Cameron and Cassie Fish. They're here with us today, and so Producer Owned Beef is sourcing locations for the state-of-the-art fed cattle processing plant, and Amarillo is one of those locations that they're looking at. The plant will consist of a $670 million capital investment. There's kind of a rendering of what that would look like, it's state-of-the-art. $670 million, it will create 1,503 jobs with an annual average salary of over $50,000 per year. The project also will be located on 1,000 acres of land, and that land is, as you can see right there, the land in blue is land that was previously, that is, that is held by the city of Amarillo. The orange piece is a 612-acre tract that is owned by Amarillo Economic Development. The facility would be a 616,000-square-foot site with 70,000 square foot of covered cattle pens. Amarillo is, makes sense for this project due to the quality of life and the central location to the producers. P.O. Producer Owned Beef is aiming to be operational by quarter three, 2025, upon their decision, and they will harvest about 700,000 fed animals a year. Again, just going over the economic development agreement, our board, the Amarillo Economic Development Board, voted on May 16th to offer a location incentive agreement to Producer Owned Beef based on the following criteria and guidelines that the Amarillo City Council and the Amarillo Economic Development Council Board has adopted. A job creation incentive of $8 million to be paid out over five years as P.O.B. hires up to 1,600 employees, they would be paid as the, as P.O.B. performs, not in, they would be paid in arrears. And then also land conveyance of the 610 acres that Amarillo Economic Development Corporation owns with a value of $3,109,120. That's $11 million in total incentive. I'm going to skip just a little bit ahead in this, just to show you a little bit of the economic impact before I ask you all if you have any questions, because it's such a huge economic impact. It's $7 billion over 20 years, that's a B. This is, this is a huge economic impact to our economy. 1,503 direct jobs and then over 4,000 spinoff jobs. The average salary of those direct jobs are $66,000. The average on the spinoff jobs are $48,000. The incentive that Amarillo Economic Development Corporation is asking you to consider is an $11 million incentive, based on the taxable sales and purchases of 1.36 billion, that's 350 million dollars per year. It would be 1.3 million in sales tax revenue, it would take nine years to pay this project back, that's it, the $11 million incentive. That's a huge and quick return on investment. So, like I said, the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation Board voted on May 20th on a 5-0 vote to approve the location incentive agreement, and I would ask that you would approve the incentive agreement today.
Counsel, do you have questions for Kevin about this project? Councilmember Stanley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Kevin, I got some of the ROI numbers, and I don't know, I don't necessarily want to take time to do a math problem, but this is a phenomenally big, profitable, well-put-together deal. It has a lot of things that are beneficial, it has a lot of things that set Amarillo alone and apart, and it utilizes almost every one of our assets. So, your ROI, I mean, I ran it earlier and I think I had it at $4.5 billion over 10 years, you're saying seven over 20, so my numbers may be wrong, but I had this at a 15x ROI, like, do you know what the ROI actually is?
We can get that for you, let me, I've got the full report in front of me.
And, and I'm not-
One thing about the, also, the, kind of the difference in the numbers that you have versus, that number is just on payroll and sales tax usage. It does not include the construction of the facility or the construction workers and the sales tax off of that. It only considers the permanent jobs and does not consider actually the capital investment. So, when you add that in, you're going to get to the number, the nine billion-
That probably works, because you gave me like 670 million, you know, and there's a factor on that of almost a billion dollars' worth of economic impact just from the construction costs alone. So, a gentleman here earlier today said, you know, why are you guys giving away these tax abatements? What, you know, how about giving, you know, a tax abatement to an existing company that's been here 20 years that is just doing business as usual? Well, this is exactly the reason that I have to vote for things like this, and it does make sense sometimes to listen to, why are you giving away taxes and then telling us we need to raise taxes, or that we need more tax money to fix streets and potholes? I understand that philosophy, but I also understand business and ROI. So, when you bring a deal like this to us, it makes my job so much easier in the fact that this is exactly what you're created to do, this is what the AEDC's meant to do. And, and the investment on this is totally different than maybe some of the other things we can look at here today. And so, I want to point out how large this deal is and why we do what we're doing, because it does bring about the economic impact that we need, and some of our future needs that we'll discuss later here today might be on the tail end of some of these benefits, some of these impacts, not necessarily in the beginning of them. So, you're almost doing too good of a job, you know? And I hadn't talked about the second one yet, so I'll quit.
Well, I appreciate the comments, Councilmember Stanley, we've got a great team, and we're excited about this project. We think it's a great project, it's locally and regionally owned, that makes a huge difference. You know, we, we hope they choose Amarillo, we certainly, I think today, hopefully is a good step towards that, hopefully with the approval of, of the incentive and the abatement, I think, you know, hopefully they'll choose Amarillo. Certainly will be a historic day if they do.
Other questions, council? Okay, there's no other questions, do we have a motion with regard to Item 3E?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Producer Owned Beef that would provide Producer Owned Beef $8 million for the creation of full-time employees to be paid over five years based on a five-year performance term, and would provide for Amarillo Economic Development Corporation to convey 610 acres valued at $3,109,200 to Producer Owned Beef.
It's been moved by the Mayor pro temp and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the location incentive agreement between AEDC and Producer Owned Beef LLC. Any further questions or discussion about that motion?
This is a home run.
Oh my goodness, this might be a grand slam, right? I mean, there, there are a few projects, how many years has the EDC, is it 35 years?
33.
33 years that the EDC's been in existence, looking for projects to incentivize similar to this, but impact-wise, I think Councilmember Stanley has analyzed it correctly, this is a tremendous and unique impact. We're very grateful to have this in our community. We don't have to vote for it, we get to vote for it, and what a privilege. Hopefully, you're going to be using local construction companies, no, you're using local funding, both private and using a local bank, so we appreciate it, and it builds our local farming-
harvesting capacity. Producer owned beef is a regionally created entity that will create new harvesting capacity and give the producers direct access to controlling cattle harvesting. This will strengthen the link between cattle ranchers and consumers. The opportunity, I also, before I get into the opportunity, I want to introduce you to two of the principals that are part of Producer Owned Beef, and that's Casey Cameron and Cassie Fish. They're here with us today. And so Producer Owned Beef is sourcing locations for the state-of-the-art fed cattle processing plant. And Amarillo is one of those locations that they're looking at. The plant will consist of a $670 million capital investment. There's kind of a rendering of what that would look like. It's state-of-the-art. Six hundred and seventy million. It will create 1,503 jobs with an annual average salary of over $50,000 per year. The project also will be located on 1,000 acres of land. And that land is, as you can see right there, the land in blue is land that was previously, that is, that is held by the city of Amarillo. The orange piece is a 612-acre tract that is owned by Amarillo Economic Development. The facility would be a 616,000 square foot site with 70,000 square foot of covered cattle Amarillo is, makes sense for this project due to the quality of life and the central location to the producers. Producer Owned Beef is aiming to be operational by quarter three, 2025, upon their decision, and they will harvest about 700,000 fed animals a year. Again, just going over the economic development agreement, our board, the Amarillo Economic Development Board, voted on May 16th to offer a location incentive agreement to Producer Owned Beef based on the following criteria and guidelines that the Amarillo City Council and the Amarillo Economic Development Council Board has adopted. A job creation incentive of $8 million to be paid out over five years as P O B hires up to 1,600 employees. They would be paid as the, as P O B performs, not, not in, they would be paid in arrears. And then also land conveyance of the 610 acres that Amarillo Economic Development Corporation owns with a value of $3,109,120. That's $11 million in total incentive. I'm going to skip just a little bit ahead in this, just to show you a little bit of the economic impact before I ask y'all if you have any questions, because it's such a huge economic impact. It's $7 billion over 20 years. That's a B. This is, this is a huge economic impact to our economy. 1,503 direct jobs and then over 4,000 spinoff jobs. The average salary of those direct jobs are $66,000. The average on the spinoff jobs are 40, $48,000. The incentive that Amarillo Economic Development Corporation is asking you consider is an $11 million incentive. Based on the taxable sales and purchases of 1.36 billion, that's 300, that's $350 million per year. It would be 1.3 million in sales tax revenue. It would take nine years to pay this project back. That's it. The $11 million incentive. That's a huge and quick return on investment. So, like I said, the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation Board voted on May 20th on a 5-0 vote to approve the location incentive agreement, and I would ask that you would approve the incentive agreement today.
Counsel, do you have questions for Kevin about this project? Councilmember Stanley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Kevin, I got some of the ROI numbers, and I don't know, I don't necessarily want to take time to do a math problem, but this is a phenomenally big, profitable, well put-together deal. It has a lot of things that are beneficial. It has a lot of things that set Amarillo alone and apart, and it utilizes almost every one of our assets. So, your ROI, I mean, I ran it earlier, and I think I had it at $4.5 billion over 10 years. You're saying seven over 20. So, my numbers may be wrong, but I had this at a 15x ROI. Like, do you know what the ROI actually is?
We can get that for you. Let me, I've got the full report in front of me.
And, and I'm not-
One thing about the, also, the, kind of the difference in the numbers that you have versus we, that number is just on payroll and sales tax usage. It does not include the construction of the facility or the construction workers and the sales tax off of that. It only considers the permanent jobs and does not consider actually the capital investment. So, when you add that in, you're going to get to the number, the nine billion-
That probably works, because you gave me like 670 million, you know, and there's a factor on that of almost a billion dollars worth of economic impact just from the construction costs alone. So, a gentleman here earlier today said, you know, why are you guys giving away these tax abatements? What, you know, how about giving, you know, a tax abatement to an existing company that's been here 20 years that is just doing business as usual? Well, this is exactly the reason that I have to vote for things like this. And, and it does make sense sometimes to listen to, why are you giving away taxes and then telling us we need to raise taxes? Or, or that we need more tax money to fix streets and potholes? I understand that philosophy, but I also understand business and ROI. So, when you bring a deal like this to us, it makes my job so much easier in the fact that this is exactly what you're created to do. This is what the AEDC is meant to do. And, and the investment on this is totally different than maybe some of the other things we can look at here today. And so, I want to point out how large this deal is and why we do what we're doing, because it does bring about the economic impact that we need. And some of our future needs that we'll discuss later here today might be on the tail end of some of these benefits, some of these impacts, not necessarily in the beginning of them. So, you're, you're almost doing too good of a job, you know? And I hadn't talked about the second one yet, so I'll quit.
Well, I appreciate the, the comments, Councilmember Stanley. We've got a great team, and we're excited about this project. We think it's a great project. It's locally and regionally owned. That makes a huge difference. You know, we, we hope they choose Amarillo. We certainly, I think today, hopefully is a good step towards that. Hopefully with the approval of, of, of the incentive and the abatement, I think, you know, hopefully they'll choose Amarillo. Certainly will be a historic day if they do.
Other questions, Counsel? Okay, there's no other questions. Do we have a motion with regard to item 3E?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Producer Owned Beef that would provide Producer Owned Beef 8 million for the creation of full-time employees to be paid over five years based on a five-year performance term and would provide for Amarillo Economic Development Corporation to convey 610 acres valued at $3,109,200 to Producer Owned Beef.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the location incentive agreement between AEDC and Producer Owned Beef LLC. Any further questions or discussion about that motion?
This is a home run.
Oh, my goodness. This might be a grand slam, right?
Grand slam, or...
I mean, there, there are a few projects, how many years has the EDC, is it 35 years?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years that the EDC's been in existence, looking for projects to incentivize similar to this. But impact-wise, I, I think Councilmember Stanley has analyzed it correctly. This is a tremendous and unique impact. We're very grateful to have this in our community. We don't have to vote for it. We get to vote for it. And what a privilege. Hopefully going to be using local construction companies. No, you're using local funding, both private and using a local bank. So, we appreciate it, and it builds our local farming and ag industries. It should be here. And so, we know you've yet to make that final decision, but I think we're about to vote to make our pitch to you for it to be here. Any other comments, Counsel? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Well done, AEDC team. Let's consider item 3F. Mr. City Manager?
Hello, Mayor. We've got Kevin Carter to talk about the abatements and, sorry.
I think your microphone's not on.
Thank you very much. Mayor, we've got Kevin Carter to talk about the further incentives that the city will participate in, and this is tax abatement. So, Kevin?
That's why they don't let me touch the clicker, so I've messed up something, I think. Sorry, Jenny. The project's scope and proposal we've went over, it's $670 million, fif, over 1,500 full-time jobs with, with an annual average salary over the $50,000 mark. The AEDC is asking the city council to consider a 10-year, 100% tax abatement on the real and business personal property. It is within the guidelines that have been adopted by the city for, meets the table and meets the requirements for 100% for 10 years. Going back to Councilmember Stanley on the economic, economic impact of that, yes, that first 10 years is abated, but that next 10 years, this project will pay at around $120 million in taxes just to the city. $338 million in taxes to the, to all the taxing entities in our taxing district. That's, that is the city, the county, Amarillo College, and Highland Park ISD. So, certainly ask any question, answer any questions if I can on, on the tax abatement.
Run through those numbers again, please, Kevin.
On the tax, how much taxes will be paid?
The first 10 years-
It's 338 million total with all the taxing entities. That is-
Per year?
That's the city of, that's, that's total.
Okay.
Over a 20-year period. 10 years would be abated.
Okay. I thought I heard you say per year. I was like, I don't think that's-
No, no, not 30, not $30 million a year.
Okay, yeah.
But that's 122 for the city of Amarillo over that, that next 10 years. We always do that on a 20-year. That way you can see that benefit. Yeah, the first 10 years, we're asking for the abatement, but for the next 10 years, it's $122 million to the city of Amarillo. And 338 total with the, with the four taxing entities.
Yeah.
Or five taxing entities, including the groundwater district.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry.
Thank you, Kevin. Do we have a motion with regard to item 3F then, Counsel?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve a tax abatement agreement between the city of Amarillo, the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation, and Producer Owned Beef LLC that will provide for an abatement of future taxes on the construction and equipment cost at 100% abatement for 10 years.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve the tax abatement agreement in item 3F. Do we have any further discussion or questions about that motion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. Congratulations, AEDC team. It's a lot of work to bring a project like this, and we hope that you interpret from this vote, two 5-0 votes, a very strong and solid support behind the project. Same thing, Casey, Cassie, we appreciate you being here today. It, it's a historic project for our city and for our economy going forward. Thank you for the work you've put into it.
And I'd like to also add is that this was a joint project with the city of Amarillo. It wasn't just AEDC, the city of Amarillo, and I know Andrew's getting ready to present something. We could not have done that without the city, helping us offer the incentive package that we're getting to offer this and, and the work that we did with Andrew's department and Floyd's department. And so, what a great job. And so, we appreciate the partnership that we have. Not every city can say they have that good partnership between the, their economic development and the city. So, appreciate y'all as well. Thank you, Jared.
Appreciate your leadership and the team's leadership, Jared. Which leads us to the next item. Item 3G is consideration of a Chapter 380 Economic Development Program Agreement between the city of Amarillo and Producer Owned Beef LLC.
Mayor, this is the final step of, of what we're doing today with regard to producers' own beef. And to bring to a close is talking about the 380 Economic Development Agreement. We're going to be talking about water lines, sewer, sewer services, facilitating and expediting, building safety and permitting inspections and construction process, as well as because of the high volume of water and our unique position in, in cattle country of having available water, having an agreement with them to provide water. So, Andrew Freeman, Assistant City Manager, is going to walk us through all that. Answer any questions, Counsel of House. Andrew?
Yes, sir. And, and I want to echo what Kevin said as far as this project and the team effort that it took to get it to today. It's definitely been a pleasure working with AEDC and with the P O B team, with Casey and Cassie. We sat in on many different meetings, and they're, they're tough negotiators, but we, I think we worked out a, a great deal for, for both sides. So, I'm just going to cover some of the highlights of the 380 agreement. Of course, Kevin covered all the, all the benefits, so I'll, I'll be very brief. Of course, you just approved the tax abatement, but the property that, that Kevin referenced that's owned by the city, that was actually sold to the company or LLC on behalf of P O B for this project. So, that was approved as well. So, that was a portion of the, the city's participation in this effort. They were the highest offer on that after we listed it for offers with a broker, going through the state requirements for that. And then as far as the Chapter 380, just to cover the, the high points, the city's going to be participating through design, construction, or water main extension to serve the facility. That's approximately $3.4 million investment. The city's also going to participate up to $120,000 for a sanitary sewer line extension. And then as far as the building permit fee, this is based on current rates, but a value of 300 million for the construction of the project at 1.29 million. Basically, to give them some consistency, knowing the timing of this project and that building permit fees might increase, this allows them to plug in a number right off the bat, knowing this is what they can count on when they come to submit for permits. And that'll also include plan review revisions. And of course, with these projects, we, we work very quickly to get these reviewed and inspected to keep them on time with their construction. And then Jared mentioned as well, there is a water rate structure included in this Chapter 380 that is similar to other beefpacking plants, so that's been included as far as this project's concerned. And then P O B also consents to annexation, so part of that tax abatement is, of course, being in the city limits and abating those taxes for those first 10 years. So, those are the highlights, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have a motion with regard to item 3G?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve a Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement between the city of Amarillo and Producer Owned Beef LLC for the purpose of building a new 600,000 square feet food processing facility and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3G, which is a Chapter 380 Economic Development Program Agreement. Any discussion or questions about that motion? Hearing none. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. Okay. Item 3H. Mr. Carter?
Can I take the liberty of pointing out members of my team?
Yes, you absolutely can do that.
So, I'd like to introduce, I've got three members of my team here today, and that is Doug Nelson, Holly Hawkins, Paul Simpson. And then Michael Kittens is listening. He's in Austin on a state board, so he's listening by, listening by Zoom. So, I just want to point that out. We have a great team over there, and it's not just one person. It's the whole group, and appreciated. Then we also have a great board. That's Scott Bentley, Andrew Hall, Adrian Meander, Laura Street, and Lloyd Brown. Couldn't do it without them. So, thank you for indulging me, Mayor.
Of course. We appreciate all the work that your team does and your board.
All right. What another great day. I get to present another great project. This is CVMR. CVMR is a privately-held metal refining technology provider that is also engaged in mining and refining mineral resources. Sorry, that's hard to read. Let me see if this...
I'll try and fix it, please.
Whoop. I think it'll save most of it in the opportunity there to go. CVMR is sourcing locations for a manufacturing and processing facility of rare earth elements. The operation would bring in these refined elements to process and produce the various materials. The project would be developed in modules, and I'm going to show you what a module is. I didn't know what it was for sure until we started looking at this project, but each one of those have an estimated capital expenditure of $75 million. The total capital expenditure of this project would be $1.5 billion. This would be our first project that has a B after that, and we're very excited that. It would employ 1,000 people in the first phase and 2,500 at full capacity. Here's the site layout. It would, would be on a 400-acre platte of land that we actually just closed on, and the AEDC board and city council approved that purchase of 1,300 acres about three months ago. And so, you know, when we were looking at that land, we, we did not have a project in mind. We just knew we needed that land, and then as soon as we were start, in the process of negotiating that and getting that through the approval process, this project came to us, and we're very excited that we were able to purchase that land, and we appreciate the, the fact that you approved us buying that land and gave us the opportunity. The modules that I'm talking about are the rectangles on the second slide on the right, what those would be. Every one of those modules have a different element in it. Some of them have the same element in those modules for processing. More about the agreement. The agreement would provide for a job creation incentive of $20 million. That would be our largest job incentive that we've given out. It would be paid out over 10 years as CM, as CVMR hires and retains 1,000 employees. So, $20,000 an employee, because the average salary of these jobs are $97,000 per year. And a land conveyance of 400 acres, it's 4.8 million. That's a $24 million and $800,000 total incentive package from AEDC. I'm going to jump ahead like I did before on the economic impact of this project. The economic impact of this project is $12 billion. That's $600 million a year over a 20-year period. And, and Councilmember Stanley asked about return on investment. That's $2.3 million in sales tax revenue per year. That's only on the 2% that the city collects. It's about a 10-year payback for that $23 million, so a short turnaround on paying that back. The overall taxes being paid on this one is $435 million over the 20-year period to the taxing entities. The AEDC board voted on a 5-0 vote on May 16th, bless you, to approve the project as presented. Certainly answer any questions that you may have. Also, let me introduce before we get started, I'm sorry, Councilmember Stanley. We have Rick Adams and Tom Ladd here with CVMR, so...
Welcome, Rick. Tom? I know Holly and Tina are just as important to y'all's team.
I'm very excited. Tom actually called us on the phone, and we met at our office, and that's how we started talking about CVMR. And so, we're very happy that Tom thought about us, lives here in Amarillo, and thought about us and this project. And so, we're very excited and very thankful for Tom for letting us be considered in this. So, sorry. Councilmember Stanley, did you have a question?
Do you have questions, Councilmember Stanley?
I do appreciate that you automatically assumed that as soon as she asked if anyone had any questions, you, I would go first.
I'm sorry, I thought you reached for the mic, and I forgot to introduce. I've, I got my notes all mixed up, so...
You're good. You're good. Never at a loss for questions. So, I just kind of want to summarize the size of this project. So, the cost to my city is roughly $80 million over 10 years if you factor in all of the incentives for labor or, or employment. And then the tax abatement, which is a large one. I don't know if this is the largest tax abatement we've ever done, but I would assume so.
It will be. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, how can we justify giving away taxes like that? Well, $12 billion economic impact over 20 years. So, I mean, you're, you're stuck with, if you believe in capitalism, you know, we need free market and we need these things, but if you believe in capitalism, you also believe in incentivizing growth like this that produces capitalism, produces small business, produces growth in your economy. I'm a, I'm a small contractor, so, you know, we, we still build homes. We still build small businesses. This will hit me and everybody else here. So, the size of this doesn't need to go without a comment. So, I just make a comment because I actually didn't have a question, so, good job first time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else have questions or comments? I don't know what the term is in baseball, Eddie. Beyond a-
Back-to-back homes.
Back-to-back grand slams?
Yeah.
Which is, I think, impossible, because you got to load the bases again, but, so, yeah, or no, I don't know, yeah. Whatever it is, awesome is a genuine expression from the counsel, I think, on, it's to have projects of this magnitude.
Well, I think it just proves that we've got a great product to sell here in Amarillo.
Yes.
Things are going really, really well, and we certainly want to capitalize. It's our time, and let's capitalize on it. And that's what we're trying to do with these projects today.
Absolutely. And I think just the point that it's 33 years in the making. I mean, we have had some good projects, the Vet School. We fought hard for that project. It was an excellent project, not near the level of return that these projects give. Bell, a fantastic project. It's been decades in the making. So, you know, a lot of seeds have been planted.
You look at the land that, that P O B's going on, I'm going back to P O B, but we've owned that land for almost 20 years, and we're finally utilizing it, and what a great project that's going to be, so...
I do think it's indicative of where we are and the opportunities that we have right now. And if we capitalize on them, we'll have more opportunities. If we sit by and let them go, then, then we won't. So, I appreciate the work. I know the counsel appreciates the work that your team's doing. Okay, with that, if there are no further questions for Kevin? Councilmember Smith?
Not a question, just a comment. You always ask, and do we have questions? We have met in executive session about this and asked questions, and he got tired of my questions.
Never, Councilmember Smith.
That's true. These, these deals have a, an element of confidentiality as we're negotiating them, and, and so they are often on our executive session item. And we've had lots of conversation and lots of questions that just due to the nature of the confidential negotiation going on, didn't happen in front of, in front of the public. But I appreciate that you bring that up, that all five council members have had a lot of questions about both of these deals. And the team has worked hard to make sure those questions were addressed and...
I even asked questions of Kevin Carter about explaining this process, and he had to do his homework, but he explained it.
He did have to do his homework. That's right.
It's always good to have a little science in my life. I can tell you that.
Okay. Do we have a motion then with regard to item 3H?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and CVMR Texas Incorporated that would provide CVMR Texas $20 million for the creation of full-time employees to be paid out over 10 years based on a 10-year performance term and would provide for Amarillo Economic Development Corporation to convey 540 acres valued at 4.5 million to CVMR Texas.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve item 3H, a loca, location incentive agreement. Any concerns or questions to be discussed on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3I. Kevin?
Okay. This is the consideration of the city council to consider a 10-year, 100% tax abatement on the real and business personal property over the 10-year period based on the incentive guidelines that this body has approved. It fits within the scale. And I do want to address, I know one of the questions that, that was brought up in executive session as we were talking is, how do we find this many people? And so-
And so, I want to talk about that, that we've got a three-year ramp-up period in both of these projects and buildup. And so, I just want to talk about, here's our opportunity is through, I put up AMTEC there, but we have four other school districts that have CTE programs. We're certainly going to address that with all five ISDs. We're lucky to have those five ISDs, and they have strong CTE programs. We're going to bring that up with these entities, and then also Amarillo College, Texas Tech, and WT. It's going to take all of those entities to make this thing work, but we believe that we can. We believe that people will move here for the kind of wage that both of these projects are offering. And so, I just kind of wanted to address that. I didn't know exactly where to address that, but we are looking at that. Those questions have been asked of actually everybody in front of me today, is how are we going to get those people? We believe that we have enough time to get those people and that people will move to Amarillo for the opportunity because of the great product that we have here.
CTE programs, that stands for career technology?
Career and technical education.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, all five ISDs have that. AMTEC just happens to be the latest one that spent $77 million on that through the ISD, and so, we're very proud of what they've done.
I mean, that's truly an investment on the school district's part into our growing economic opportunities. So, you're right to think of it all as one big machine that is the Texas Panhandle. It's not even just the city of Amarillo, it's multiple counties and multiple cities. I'm grateful for all of those partners and the work that you guys and Andrew and y'all have been working hard to work together as a team, so, thank you for that.
Absolutely. And also with those ISDs and Amarillo College and WT and Texas Tech, great relationships with all of those organizations, so.
Certainly.
So, the AEDC is requesting a 10-year, 100% tax abatement on the real and business personal property. First 10 years abated with those taxing entities, and to answer the question from before, it's $434 million in taxes that will be paid on that year 11 through 20 to those taxing entities. Huge, huge investment from this company in year 11 through 20.
Any questions for Kevin about this next part of this project? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the next Item 3I, Council?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve a tax abatement agreement between the city of Amarillo and the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and CVMR Texas that will provide for an abatement of future taxes on the construction and equipment cost at 100% abatement for 10 years.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve Item 3I. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. I wish we could take pictures. I think it's preliminary. It wouldn't be appropriate to do that, but I feel like we're on the cusp of something historic here in the two things that we've just approved for the AEDC. So, I hope y'all will come back to another council meeting where we'll have an opportunity, and the timing will be appropriate for us to mark the historic nature of both of these projects, and we really do appreciate your being here today and the work that you're putting into bringing these opportunities to our community. Thank you both. At this time, we'll move on to Item 3J, which is consideration of appointments to city of Amarillo boards and commissions. You know, Council, five years ago, when the 2017 council was elected, one of the things we thought was important to do was to better involve citizens in the board appointment process, and so, we worked very hard to define that process rather than it being a week-by-week kind of ad hoc appointment as they came open. We actually defined a definite season where board appointments would be made, a definite application process for each board position, and then we've discerned that the best, it is, we do that in November, and that whole process starts 1st of October. But then, there are sometimes board positions that come open mid-year, and especially ones that affect the ability of a committee or a board to make a quorum to do their business. And so, six months after those appointments, we are doing a mid-year board appointment just to fill in those quorum positions so that boards can keep operating until we get around to that October-November process. And so, that's what we have here today on the agenda under Item 3J. There are several boards there listed in your packet, and Stephanie Coggins, the City Secretary, is going to walk us through each one of those open positions and help us make those appointments. Stephanie?
Mayor, thank you. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, we've got six boards today for consideration, and as the mayor mentioned, these are just ones where we've had vacant positions come open, and we want to fill those to make sure that those boards can meet quorum. So, we're going to start with Animal Management and Welfare, and I will tell you, we sent an email, but you also have a packet of information sitting at your diocese and with some guide for motions. You can fill in the names, but we wanted to make sure you have the terms that we're appointing for. So, we'll start with the Animal Management and Welfare Advisory Board. This is a five-person board with three-year terms, and we've got one vacancy for a term ending December 2023. We don't have any staff recommendations on this, but I will make a note to you, one of our applicants, Linda Smith, is recommended by the Amarillo Panhandle Humane Society.
And I would like to submit Linda Smith.
Are you making a motion?
I certainly can.
Okay, why don't you make a motion, and then we can, if you don't mind?
No, I don't mind. No, Mayor, I don't mind at all doing that. I move to appoint Linda Smith to fill an unexpired vacancy with a term ending December 31, 2023.
I don't know her.
I'll second that motion. I know Linda. With regard to this, kind of the staff recommendation of that, there are lots of good folks on this list. I think Linda has a history of working with folks who have previously served on this board. I think it's interesting, we kind of have a connection with the legal community, it feels like, between Judge Baker and Chris Ramplmeyer and.
Yeah, and she does.
And she does.
She is an attorney.
Yeah, so, that's how I know Linda, just from practicing with her for the last 25 years. But this is an issue that she cares about, and as far as being dependable to attend meetings and be productive in the conversations, I think she brings a good viewpoint to that committee. But, any other discussion, questions? Okay, let's vote on the motion then. All those in favor of the motion of Linda Smith taking that position, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. Our next board and commission is the First Responders Excellence and Innovation Fund. This is a seven-person committee. It's specific on the positions, and one of the vacancies, the, excuse me, the only vacancy is an at-large citizen position, and we do have a recommendation for former Mayor Paul Harple, who is willing to serve on this board.
I move to appoint former Mayor Paul Harple to fill an unexpired vacancy with a term ending December 31, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to appoint former Mayor Harple to this vacancy. Any discussion or questions about that? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Next is our Library Advisory Board. We have two appointments for this board. One is a vacancy, and one is to replace Monica Hart, who has resigned. Ms. Hart is graciously continuing to serve until her replacement is appointed. We do have three applicants for this and two staff recommendations. You'll note Kristy Guyon and Melinda Grady. And Amanda Barrera is here from the libraries to answer any questions. She's the liaison to this board.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate John Essler as a potential for this board.
Okay, is that a motion?
I move to nominate John Essler for the Board of Library Advisory.
Okay, thank you. Do we have an application on him, Councilmember Stanley?
We do not. He and I spoke earlier today, so, he asked me to just, I guess, maybe tell a little bit about him, if you're willing to.
Sure, that'd be helpful, thank you.
He owns Pratt Plumbing. He did say that Dr. Sauer, he's worked in your home, and you know who he is, and Mayor, I believe he said he had done some work for you as well. He is an elder at a local church. He's a good guy, and he would be a great fit for this because he's very community-minded and is trying to get out there and put himself in a place where he can really contribute and make an impact. So, he looked at this board, and I know his time is limited, but I think for what this board demands or requires, he's a great fit. I don't know how many kids he's got, but he did say they were younger. And so, he said he's in the library all the time. He said him and his wife are in the library, and so, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for people that use these services to sit on these boards.
Okay, it's been seconded then. Any further discussion or questions with regard to that?
Okay, just for clarification, which position here?
Let me move for the vacancy position, please.
So, John Essler, the motion is that John Essler would serve in a position that ends 12/31/2024.
And he would, so, in other words, Councilmember Stanley is nominating him to fill an unexpired vacancy with a term ending December 31, 2024. That's my understanding, is that right?
Do you agree with that, Councilmember Stanley?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I won't speak for you. Okay, so, I think that's the motion. We call for a question on that?
Call a question.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes with a 5-0 vote.
Then I would move to nominate Kristy Guyon for the other position, the Monica Hart's position, as she's stepping down.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Sauer and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to appoint Kristy Guyon to the Monica Hart vacancy, which that term ends 12/31/2024. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, you're good with that? So, that's the motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion or questions about it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. Our next committee is the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee. This is a seven-member committee plus one non-voting ex officio. The term length is three years, and we have two vacancies on this board. There are three applications on here, and there are no staff recommendations on this one. Donnie Hooper serves as liaison to this board, and he's here if you have any specific questions.
Mayor, I'd like to move or nominate Stephanie Atkinson to fill one of the positions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Stephanie Atkinson to one of the vacancies. Counsel, do we have any conversation, discussion, questions about that?
I've known her a long time. She's quite a bike rider.
Okay, so, she's a bike rider?
Yes.
Okay. With that, we'll call the question. Everyone who's in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote for one vacancy. What do you think about the second one?
I'm looking at Councilmember Smith.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have an opinion on these others. If you want me to pick one, I'd say Melinda Landry.
That does kind of, if you're just, gender is certainly not a qualification, but if you're looking for differences in perspectives, it can sometimes do that.
And I will say, I don't know Mr. Satoff, but Ms. Landry worked for the Civic Center as a event manager, I believe.
She was not with the Civic Center.
Used to work with the Civic Center.
Well, do we have a motion then?
I move to appoint Melinda Landry to fill an unexpired vacancy with a term ending December 31, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Dr. Sauer to appoint Melinda Landry to the open vacancy on the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee. Any discussion or questions about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. We've got two more. Our last board we have is the Quell Creek Public Improvement District Advisory Board. This is one we struggled to fill in November, just because it's very specific on a homeowner in that pit, but we have found that Mr. Steven Ackroyd is willing to serve, and so, staff recommends appointing him to the vacant term.
Mayor, I move to appoint Steven Ackroyd to fill an unexpired homeowner vacancy with a term ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to appoint Steven Ackroyd to the Quell Creek Public Improvement District. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote.
And last on our list for this item is the Civil Service Commission. This is a three-person board, and it operates a little differently. Under Chapter 143 of the Local Government Code, these three members are appointed by the city manager, and those appointments are confirmed by the elected body. And so, we would request today that you confirm the appointment of Lilia Escaheda to serve a term ending December 31, 2023, and Bill Harris for a term ending December 2024. And there is a memo at the back of your packet that explains their appointments.
Mayor, I move to confirm the appointment of Lilia Escaheda to the Civil Service Commission for a term ending December 31, 2023, and the appointment of Bill Harris to the Civil Service Commission for a term ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve Lilia Escaheda and Bill Harris as members of the Civil Service Commission. Any discussion or questions about that motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Just again, I know a tremendous amount of work goes into compiling the applications and the software that we use to keep up with boards and commissions, and I appreciate all the work. The council appreciates the work that you do as City Secretary and that your team does do this.
And I just want to add, extremely organized.
Extremely organized, which helps our time be more efficient. We really appreciate that. We certainly appreciate every citizen who's willing to serve on those boards and who has taken time to fill out an application, to be a part of the process, and to give us a large pool of people to choose from. Every year that we do this part of the process, appointments, our pool gets larger and larger, and I think that, again, kudos to Stephanie, Mr. City Manager, I want you to know, kudos to your team and to Stephanie's leadership, because the more organized they are, the better the process is, the more citizens that can participate, and the larger pool we have to choose from, which I think makes those boards and commissions look more and more like our city. Okay, on to the next item on the agenda, which is Item 3K, Presentation and Discussion of Key Findings from the Garfield Public Private Predevelopment Final Report for the Amarillo Civic Center Complex Redevelopment.
Can you go ahead and introduce it?
Yes, go ahead.
We have Andrew Freeman, Assistant City Manager, is going to introduce the item. We're going to go through a number of people talking, but we entered into an agreement with Garfield in June of last year. So, we've been working with them. So we've been working with them for quite some time to help us find, identify a way forward on the Civic Center and arena projects. So Andrew's going to walk us through that process and the findings from Garfield. The report has been sent to council and so any questions you have on that, you can ask Andrew. Then we're going to move straight into Item L. There is no action on K. It is the presentation of the report. It will lead directly into L. So at any point, anybody has any questions of Andrew, please feel free to ask and we will move through a process here. Andrew?
Yes, sir. So yes, it will be a team presentation. Part of mine, I'll also ask Jason Herrick to come up as Chair of the P3 Committee to give his insight into the process. We've also got a few other members here. Sherry Ferguson and Gunny Brown are also in the audience and Cashin is an honorary staff member that participated in that process, so she's here as well. So I'll start by just covering a little bit of the background that got us to today. So fall 2020 is when an initial committee, after the 2020 election took place, was formed to investigate and look for different alternative options for the Civic Center. Part of that process was interviewing, researching, trying to find different public sector or private sector partners to work with us to figure out some different alternatives. June 2021, like Jared stated, is when city council voted on the Garfield Public Private Contract that was focused on reducing the impact to citizens and exploring other financial tools and revenue sources that could contribute toward this project. So fall 2021 is when the subcommittee was formed and assisted with feedback throughout that work. Garfield team held over 10 meetings, three of those including the P3 Committee, and also numerous phone calls, emails and things, working on that project to get to May 2022 of the final report that was delivered to city council last week. So as far as the Civic Center Complex project background, there have been four needs assessments completed. Those started, kicked off in April 2011, the first one completed in 2012. After the analysis was done, that covered all the future needs and economic impact and everything that was included in those projects. The original components include a new arena, new exhibit hall, renovated meeting space, new main lobby, improved facade landscaping, parking garage and Santa Fe Depot rehabilitation. So as far as the discussion with Garfield and what they honed in on to try and reduce costs and look at ways of phasing the project, different alternatives, they recommended the components of a new multipurpose arena, new exhibit hall, minor improvements to the existing spaces. These would be the main improvements needed to make the facility function better as well as ADA requirements. And then the committee toward the end also discussed the continuing benefits of investing dollars into the Santa Fe Depot rehabilitation and creating an asset there that continued to be used for the benefit of the city and the citizens. Other recommendation that came out of that report, also talked about regardless of whether the city were to improve the facilities, they did recommend a third-party private operator for the facility based on their experience and working with their subconsultants. ASM helped contribute to the pro forma and showed some of the benefits of their expertise and also changing some of the structure of how they could create additional revenue sources. Some of those were also discussed by our previous general manager, Chairman Bassett retired. He came to city council and talked about those same opportunities. Some are easier to tackle as a third-party operator than perhaps a city-run department, but those are things that city council can consider moving forward on in the future as well. A little more detail on the recommended components. So the arena in Garfield's report came in at 211 million, the exhibit hall 59 million, and then the minor improvements just under five for a total of 275 million project costs. And those were what they recommended focusing on. If you took in all the other components, minus Santa Fe that wasn't priced out in their report, it came to 430 million, which isn't quite apples-to-apples of what was on the 2020 bond, but is getting closer to similar. And that was for, the bond was for, I believe, 279 million. So just to give you an idea of the increase in costs and scope, and that's something that Laura and Jerry will touch on in their portion of the presentation. As far as the benefits of adding the new arena and new exhibit hall, those are fleshed out in the report as well, as far as the revenue sources that were projected over 36 years of financing to help pay for this facility. Number one, the revenue sources unfortunately are not something that could be backed for debt, so it's really finding a way to pay for it and then hoping the revenue comes in on these projections to help reduce debt service is one alternative. Another alternative is if you increase that revenue, if you're already paying for the current project, then maybe you could use that for future phases or future improvements based on what's coming in. So those main revenue sources were naming rights. They worked with a consultant on really penciling out what benefits would come from that and it was 106 million estimated over the term of that agreement. And that was strictly based on having the arena and the exhibit hall done at the same time. Otherwise, you do not get the full benefit of naming rights included. There was the Civic Center's subsidiary savings. So this was the third-party operator component and increasing revenue through their fee adjustments, catering, concessions, food and beverage. Year one savings of 234, so that would be seeing a savings on top of the subsidy that we're usually contributing through hot tax for the facility, growing to a total of 91 million over 36 years. Incremental sales tax growth from the project coming online, 19 million. Tiers one increment was pretty minimal. That was about 100,000 over the 36 years that they plugged in there. And then hotel occupancy, just by the increased business that we could bring in for conventions and concerts and all the different entertainment options, was 103 million. So those totaled to approximately 327.8 million over 36 years. That would go toward an opportunity to pay off debt service toward a project. Another note, they did include ADC as a potential conversation. We are not going to have that in our recommendation later in the evening. That one would need a lot more discussion because that does need to have city council and ADC board discussions as far as considering that and ultimately it does require going to the voters for approval for a Type B project. So not something that really fits in the timeline of trying to move forward on a project quickly with construction prices and interest rates increasing. As far as their financing recommendation, is what was built into the report, was a certificate of obligation over a 35-year term, which currently is not an option until after November 2023 or 2023 of November exactly, which is three years after the bond. But their recommendation, of course, was to do a CO, but then have the revenue streams to buy down that debt or reduce the required payment from the city with those other sources. Next slide, please. So as far as the reasons they include in their project, they touched on the Civic Center revenue and economic impact declining if you were not to move forward with the project. Current capital investment is inadequate to ensure and sustain industry-standard facilities. The Civic Center will continue to become less appealing to guests, which adds to the declining revenue and economic impact. And then the burden on Amarillo taxpayers and residents will continue to increase if no improvements or rehabilitation are made. And then these are something that Jerry and Laura will touch on, but construction costs do continue to increase and outpace inflation. The sooner pricing is locked in on a project, the less costly it could be. And then financing costs are increasing with the additional federal rate hikes expected, so financing sooner will lower the ultimate cost to the city in the long term. As far as the economic impact from the construction project alone, it would be approximately 395 million in economic impact during the construction. And then as far as long-term operational economic impact, it was 118 million over a 10-year period, 98 million of which would be investments into our hotels, restaurants, retail, entertainment industry that would benefit from all the conventions and shows coming to town for that asset in downtown. Construction jobs are around 1,900 and then direct jobs for the Civic Center would be 160 that were included in that economic impact study that Garfield completed. And then last slide, this is the, this is a list of the P3 Committee members that participate in the process. And with this slide, I'll ask Jason to come up and provide a little insight into that process with the committee.
While Jason's coming up, Andrew, can we ask you a couple of quick questions? You mentioned with regard to the new revenue. I think I read in the executive summary, page 5, that, and you said that revenue can't be bonded on?
Correct.
But that if it came in at the level they would, they're predicting, it would pay for 67% to 76% of the project. Did I read that?
That was if you include the ADC, I believe. That was 500 million over 36 years.
Okay.
Still 300 million would go, do a large portion of that as well.
Somewhere more, around 35% to 40% of the project.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, counsel, for Andrew? Obviously, he can come back anytime we need him to. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, counsel. Jason Herrick, happy to be here. I do want to thank each of our committee members in this process. Andrew put them on the slide. Gunny Brown, Randy Burkett, Sherry Ferguson is here today, Jennifer Gallardo, Mike Hughes, Bobby Lee, David Lovejoy, Kush Nathu, Rod Schroder, Julie Sims, Tom Warren, Noah Williams, Pat Williams. These committee members put in a lot of time and effort, not in our, just in our formal meetings, but separate meetings that each of them had, plus we all participate in surveys. So let me just give you kind of an idea of, at least from our perspective, how the process went. As Andrew mentioned, Garfield was hired last summer, engaged by you guys last summer. We've obviously been trying to get our arms around a very big project at the complex for many years with all the work that's been done previously. The mission for Garfield was pretty direct. We had to find some way to lower the impact of a project there to the Amarillo taxpayers. There were several things that they could employ to get there. One was private partnerships of some sort and we needed some way to monetize that and actually put some dollars to that. Operational enhancements, we spent a lot of time on operational enhancements. Financing options, which again Laura will touch on in a little bit. And then we also talked a lot about phasing and how to reorder things, defer costs. That's really a twofold element. Part of that is to be able to put some of the dollars in and then be able to capture those benefits from the other two bullet points that we're talking about, those revenue sources that we can go generate off of. That way we could start to get that revenue in and put us in a better position to address any of the elements that get phased out or deferred and to also potentially be able to reduce, further reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers. Obviously, we were starting from the point when the proposal went out. First off, it was 13.1 cents that was going out. We had to work on that number. So our project, that was really Garfield's job. What our committee job was, was we were providing feedback to Garfield as they were working through this, trying to provide them direction. We didn't write the report that ultimately came out and obviously don't have the relationships with the operators, but as they would come up with their items, we tried to present that in our committee meetings, talk through design elements, talk through what was important, try to keep the focus on, again, the main goal of reducing the impact to the taxpayers. So we did ask them, and I will say, our expectation had been that it would be a little bit faster process and I think we deserve a little bit of blame for that because we did ask them to go back in a couple of cases because we were looking for as many options as possible. So you'll see in that report, you know, there's an alternative A, that source that kind of puts things in one order. We had them go back and put alternative B, which was to put it in a different order. And then ultimately, we came back with what's our base recommendation, which is a really slimmed-down, tried-a-project. So as was mentioned, when it came back and we were comparing the cost of the project versus what was on the ballot before, there'd been a huge increase in construction costs and I think we all recognized what that was. And so just from the get-go, we knew we were going to have to look at different ways to do this. And so what we were trying to get to was what ultimately became the base recommendation that Garfield talks about. As a committee, we, as mentioned, we met with Garfield several times. I had four, you had three. I thought we had four, but anyway, four kind of formal meetings. But then we also took our entire group on tours when the World Ranch, the WRCA was in town. That was our chance to kind of go and really talk specifically with them. We also met with, when the Farm and Ranch Show was in town, our committee went around with all the leaders of the Farm and Ranch Show, really just highlighting a lot of the things that are already outlined in the volume one through four. But it did help, I think, our committee members to really sit and talk with the people that are trying to do programmatic things within the Civic Center and within the Coliseum area right now. We also, as a committee, all filled out written surveys with our recommendations, with the events that we wanted to see, with the design elements that were important to us. Those were also circulated among some of the top vendors as well, including the WRCA and the Farm and Ranch Show, to provide that input to them so that they develop that into this final report. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of the things I think are important to look at out of that final version. So that base recommendation is really kind of trying to get this down to our bare bones project. So it is a replacement for the Coliseum, which as noted in there and has been noted in the previous volumes before, the Coliseum is just not an event venue that we can sustain for the next 40 years. There's just too many things and I'm not, I won't go through the elements of that today because I don't think that's new territory, but the current Coliseum was just inadequate. The second part is really for the convention space and this was particularly highlighted with the Farm and Ranch Show when we met with them. But it's just absolutely necessary in today's convention world to have free span, no columns, with plugs on the floor to have conventions. And we just do not have that in the North Exhibit Hall right now. So the second part, besides the things that were identified, is just you can't really do anything without changing the ramps. You can't do anything without the ADA compliance. If you touch it all, those things are just going to have to be part of the deal. But then we said, we're going to have to cut a lot, some of these things. And we cut the parking garage. That was one of the first things we said. We were just going to have to deal with that. And then after we went through this process, we ultimately cut about $150 million of projects associated with the renovation of the, of the North Exhibit Hall and also all the common space that was the connectivity part of the Coliseum with the Grand Plaza area and to wrap all that in. So we really end up with the ability, one, to reduce some of our design costs because we get a little simpler. There was some, you know, there's a lot of extra engineering that has to be done on the other pieces of that and we kind of get down to what we hope is really the best balance that we could strike of what gets us the pro forma numbers that get presented in this, in this report. How do we get ourselves where we are in the black as a Civic Center and balance out those pieces of the puzzle with what has to be the two pieces, the other pieces to get those revenue things that we've identified? So let me just give quickly that example. So he mentions the naming rights and the sponsorships. I would, when you think about that, don't think so much about Minute Maid Park naming or the name of the Globe Life, just the name of the facility itself because the real dollar's in there and I was very impressed with this work that came back that put these dollar amounts together. The real work with that is around the sponsorships and the impressions that end up going through the door, particularly around our conventions. There certainly is revenue built in there around the seat licensing and naming of the facilities themselves as part of those term deals. But really, the work that I think we particularly benefited from was identifying a monetary stream associated with the sponsorships available for that. To get those dollars, you had to have a Coliseum and you had to have this new convention space. So those two elements became kind of tied together. The other part is the operational income. As noted, the Civic Center right now operates in the red. In order to get that operational income up into the black and to gain the benefit of the projects together, you had to do, again, these two parts of the puzzle. Mostly in this case around, for the pro forma portion, around the Coliseum. So for the pro forma, the Coliseum was extremely important. For the economic impact parts of it, ultimately, the convention portion was extremely important to those. So we really honed in and their final report kind of highlights those two things. So that's really the work that the committee did that I wanted to note. Obviously, open for any other questions. I do, I would note, and I think it's worth at least talking about, that I do, I would note, and I think it's worth at least talking about, that we've just approved a couple of projects that are asking for 2,500 jobs to come in in a 2.5%, you know, unemployment environment. We do have to have some of these projects to help businesses. Businesses need these tools to attract good quality employees to come to Amarillo as well. So that, these become important projects for continuing to be able to hire into this environment. And so we'll leave it at that and hand it over for the next parts of the presentation, unless you've got questions for me about the committee part.
Yeah, counsel, do we have any questions for Jason? That's member Samley.
Just a couple.
Sure.
Primary task of Garfield was to find a private partnership?
Primary task, when we defined their goal, was to lower the impact to the taxpayers.
Sure.
And it had to come from what we defined and they defined ultimately as kind of four areas, but private partnerships was certainly part of that.
I mean, I think we took off running.
Operational enhancements, maybe the other pieces of it.
Yeah, we took off running with a public-private partnership, and that was my expectation of seeing something come back here, hopeful, you know, 100 million plus private partnership. We have zero private partnership, correct? Like, they didn't identify any private partners?
No, those are the revenue sources that ultimately were talked about in there. So the private partnerships are, I don't have the dollar amounts in front of me, but the naming rights portion of it, you'll find it in your piece, I think it's in the section five, the finance section. So there's the naming rights portion of that. So that's, that's private. That's all out raising dollars from the private market to both do the naming rights part of it, the seat licensing part, and also through sponsorships and advertisements through the facility itself.
And if I'm understanding you, that was tied to kind of the whole design, which was a beautiful design that they gave you a concept on. I mean, very attractive looking building and massive scale, but you're saying that the private interest really relied on doing the entire thing. Like, when you pared it down, private partnership interest wasn't there for the naming rights and some of the other?
No, what we're saying is that the private interest, in order to, to get all of the benefit of the private interest, we have, the Coliseum and the Convention Center are both necessary parts. Now, we still, in the base recommendation, there's still the removal of all of the renovations to the North Exhibit Hall and all of the renovations to the lobby area. But if you, the, there was, there was ultimately the requirement to say, if you're going to get all of this private partnership dollar, some of it's going to come from the seat licensing around the Coliseum, the other is from the impressions around the convention, and that's how you get to that dollar amount for that part of it.
And we didn't have any of those in our previous concepts? Like, this was a new thing that they brought to the table? We hadn't thought of naming rights before this?
So none of it was in the dollar amounts that were put into the ultimate, the part that went out to the vote. So none of it was offsetting. It was all to be captured later. And so we needed, I think the piece that we're being helped on is at least to be able to put some real dollar amounts to what that, what that can be.
Right. I see the revenue source. I don't see the upfront investment side of it. So in your opinion, is this any different than the previous project that was proposed and voted down?
Well, it's, yes, it is, it is.
Can you tell me how it's different?
Well, we've, we've eliminated the parking. We've eliminated the, all of the renovations to the North Exhibit Hall. So that was, I mean, in the redo of the project, that was about $100 million of the, of the cost that we took out, and it also takes out all of the lobby connectivity piece of that. So it really comes down to now, and I will also add, there was a design change on the arena, and we shrunk it by, I think they shrunk it by about 70,000 square feet in total to try and shrink the size of the arena down as well. So there was some amount of design changes and then elimination of, I guess you'd call it at least three or four of the components that kind of made up all of the project from before.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing. And then we had the other pieces of the private portion of that was the operational enhancements of going with a private party to do the operational piece of that and generating that, that revenue out of there. And, and then the other two big revenue sources that are in there, those are, those would be, I would call, hot ta, the hot tax increments and the sales tax increments, but they're smaller pieces of the puzzle.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me say to you, Jason, I appreciate you chairing the committee. I know you spent tons of time outside in the committee and chaired the committee. I appreciate that.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate that.
And thank the council members, I mean, the members of the committee that you named.
Yeah, it was, it was, we had a great, great group, and I really appreciate the time and effort that kind of went into the process there to
Thanks.
to try to help Garfield to really come up with hopefully the best product to present to you guys.
Well, it definitely, councilmember Smith and I were able to attend those meetings as a subcommittee from the city council, working on this issue, and I just would echo the amount of time spent. It is a complicated issue because there are a lot of moving parts to it. If it was easy, we would have already solved it. And so, you know, we're 12 years into, from the time a city council first said, this is a need and it needs to be studied and we need to do something about it. So I appreciate the latest Citizens Committee that's worked on it, given their time, given their ideas. I think it was very insightful to me, and you see that in the report, to read the feedback from the committee as they took the survey on the needs of the facility and the vision that they had for what type of facility we need, the types of events and the types of economic opportunity that we need to build it to meet. So that was sort of new information, even though we had done Citizens Committees before.
One of the sections that's in there, they did try to detail some of the meeting, specifically the results of the surveys and the feedback from the committee, and so that should be in your final report as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate Sheri, Gunny, that y'all would make time to be here today in addition to the time you've already spent serving. So thank you. Sure.
So if we're trying to pare this down, can I, can you explain to me the reason for putting back in the Santa Fe project? It seems to me that if we're, if we're making cuts and we're cutting things to try and come up with the best possible alternative, that would have been one of the first things that would have been pulled from the project.
Can I steer that? Jason, go ahead.
Yes, and so actually, that was not in the Garfield report. So that was one of the things that was initially taken out, and we didn't do the analysis on that part. So I think the only reason that it kind of keeps coming back in there, and ultimately I would leave this to you guys, there's kind of no way to get around the physical location of where it is as to where the rest of this project kind of goes. And so as we, as you continue to kind of look at what, what to do there, you've got a, the structure that's there that kind of continues to be, any way you draw it, it kind of circles in there. So I think that would be certainly be one of the considerations on the go-forward. I will also add, I honestly believe that's one of the best opportunities for further private partnership opportunities to maybe, to, if there's concerns about that specifically, I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity for private partnerships specifically around that part of the project.
Councilmember Smith, do you want to add to that?
Yes. When I was elected to this council, the council asked me and Elaine Hayes to kind of concentrate on the Santa Fe Depot. It was purchased by the previous council, I believe, in 2013. So we've had it nine years. And we looked at it and ferred out, and we had several entities interested in leasing it, but it needs a lot of work. It needs a roof mainly, and it's expensive roof, and maybe, I think there's some asbestos in it, I believe. Electricals needs work. And so we couldn't really locate anybody who would take it like it is. And so it was included in the first effort to get the bond issue passed to the tune of $7 million. And of course, that didn't pass. But the thought is, it's, it's a historic building. There's a lot of interest in it. If we could do, bring it up to snuff where it could be used. And so I can think of other things, but
I think the roof was a big driving factor. Preservation of the building itself is really dependent on that roof. And because the roof is red tile and, you know, it's, it's unique, it's expensive, it is part of what Jason said, everything being developed over there, and then to have that building sitting there, maybe in danger of not being preserved because we haven't put a roof on top of it, much less pulled it in as what could sort of be a shining star of that part of the project. So those were the conversations that were had around it.
Can I ask one final question?
It doesn't have to be your final question.
Just, just the final question I'm going to ask right now. Jason, did they look into any sporting teams, anchors, tenants? I mean, right now, I'm looking at a proposal. It's a, it's a business plan that's not a good one. Like, we don't have any anchor tenants. Like, why is that? Why do we not have somebody coming to the table if we're interested in spending 300-plus million dollars?
Well, I would, the, two-part answer to that. Yes, there are absolutely tenant-available pieces, and by the way, I think the committee as a whole would say that absolutely needs to be explored. I think the important part is to kind of remember where we are in the process, and the process here right now is, we have essentially the renderings, you were talking about the pretty pictures. I would say, there is no, there really is nothing more beyond that right now. The design step of the next step would be probably sitting down with your potential tenants and saying, what kind of facility ultimately would you want to do? And I think from the city standpoint, our feeling was, it's probably premature to design a facility before we get a cha, I mean, before we get a chance to sit down with that potential tenant. And I think that absolutely, by the way, should be part of the next step, the design process, which there's a number on what that part of it is, but that, that part should include starting to think about tenant usage. But you are right, that is not in the revenue designed out in here beyond what you see in the, the pro forma for the facility itself.
So that, that is a great point, and I really like that. So I was thinking this is a build-it-and-they-will-come plan. And, and what you're saying is, is you're really saying, like, we're not there yet, you know? So I'm looking at my agenda, and I'm looking at potential financing issuances, debt issuances. But what you're saying is, is like, we really would need to take steps to go out and find an anchor tenant before we could really know what it is that we're trying to build and maybe tailor to that. So things could change, things could be far more or less expensive than what you're proposing?
Well, I, I can't really comment on the construction part of it. You're, I'm out over my skis even talking about that. That would be a great thing to talk to Jerry about, I think. What I would probably, what I would say is, there is definitely another step of the designing the building part of it, and that part has not been done up to this point. And so that part has to be in the, in the process, and I think taking into account what type of tenants that you want to attract would absolutely be part of that process.
I think it's important to just, like, we, we have been through this process pretty recently with regard to building Hodge Town. And so what did that process look like? Well, before we negotiated the contract with the baseball team, we had a solid commitment from the 2015 council that we were building a facility. And so there's always kind of going to be a chicken and an egg tension to who wants to negotiate with a city when the city hasn't actually committed to building the facility? Because negotiations are time and energy suckers, you know, and, and you run the risk of if you're moving a team there, well, then something will breach and get out, and then everybody knows you're leaving the city you're in. So I think there is a process to be followed, and part of that process is that the council has got to make a commitment to having a new facility. And once that commitment is solid, which it was for the baseball stadium, then there was the whole process of, can we get a team? What's the business model look like of having an anchor tenant, or do we want to be a Kansas City which has no anchor tenant, which means they can rent to anybody at any time? They're not subject to, you know, the anchor part of the tenant, which says, we have to have the facility on these dates, and, and you lose opportunity for having that. So I do agree. I think all of that conversation is yet to come, but following what we did before in building a facility at Hodge Town, we had a solid commitment from the council on whether or not we were going to build something, and then we took that solid commitment. We went looking for an anchor tenant. We analyzed the business case of whether or not we should have one, and we designed a facility, and, and now we have it. So I think it's a great question, and I think where we are in the process is looking at, do we have a commitment from the council to building a new facility? Okay, Jason, thank you so much. Who's the next team? Oh, Laura.
Laura Storrs, Chief Financial Officer, Assistant City Manager. Laura?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So I'm here to talk about some numbers. There we go. So you have heard several things from the last two presenters related to the Garfield report. As mentioned by Andrew, he, he said that there was an option to issue COs. However, that is not available until November of 2023. Another option would be to go back to a bond election, and again, that, the earliest we could do something like that was, would be November of this year. And so we have looked for other options, and another option is to issue tax notes, but there is a capacity that we can issue from a tax note standpoint. As you have heard, again, construction costs are rising, interest rates are rising, and so we wanted to make sure we had all available options in front of you. And this is an option that would allow council, if they chose to do something, you could do something sooner than later. So, actually, I think I can do it. There we go. So a funding option that we have available, and it's one of the items on your agenda, it is to issue $260 million in tax notes. So what this would look like, we have up here on the screen, we've got a few items just to go over real quick, and I apologize for the audience because I know the numbers are a little bit small, but this is looking out over a 30-year time period. So there is a yellow line there at the top, and it's a little over 58 cents. That 58 cents is where we would have been had the bond election passed in November of 2020. We were looking, and I think this was mentioned as well, a little over 13 cents to do the project at that point. So with our existing debt, with our existing operation and maintenance rate on our tax rate, we would be at just a little over 58 cents. And as a reminder, our current tax rate is a little over 44 cents. So the next line there on this graph is a dark blue line, and what this is portraying is if we were to move forward with a $260 million tax note issuance to then later be refunded and pushed out over a longer time period, the structure for that would start out around 56 cents in 2023 and peak at about 57 and a half cents in 2024. Now, again, this is assuming all current assumptions, current operation and maintenance rate, current debt that is issued, and the current estimated values that we have in place from Pratt. You will see then, after 2023, that tax rate starts to trend down, and that is as, that's the way this debt would be structured. And that is as, that's the way this debt would be structured, and as certain outstanding debt issuance start to, um, get paid off in future years. There's also a green line on here, which is another funding option. It would still be to, um, look at issuing the tax notes, but to shift some of our existing cash funding that we do for the replacement of our fleet, um, equipment and vehicles. So that's like your police cars, your fire trucks, your trash trucks, um, your traffic trucks, parks trucks, all those, we pay for those every year in cash. We could change that and start issuing debt for those items every single year. Um, but it would take, an option like this would take issuing debt consecutively over a seven-year time period for the replacement of those fleet vehicles. So you're switching it from one side of the tax rate to the other side of the tax rate. That is what the green line is here. You will see that the peak on it is a little further out, um, and it's about 55 and a half cents, um, but in total, it does keep the tax rate, um, higher, um, than the blue line option. We will come back to this. So if you have questions, please stop me along the way. Um, I wanted to recap a couple of things from the Garfield report. Um, as mentioned, naming rights are something, um, that could be utilized at a future point in time. We don't have the ability to bring those on right away. We need both an arena and exhibit space to, to get those naming right dollars to come in. And so, um, that is something to keep in mind as we move forward on this. There is potentially an option for that 2% additional hotel occupancy tax, but that takes a change at the state legislator. So that would take some time to bring something like that forward, but it is certainly an option that could bring additional dollars in to help fund outstanding debt or, and/or portions of this project. Um, as also mentioned, there's, um, there's, um, a recommendation to bring in a third-party operator. What that would do is reduce our subsidy that we are providing to the Civic Center right now. Um, we're using hotel occupancy tax dollars to subsidize that. As mentioned, um, from what the Garfield report shows, that would eventually turn into a profit, um, that the third-party operator could produce from an operating standpoint. So all of those hot dollars that are used now for a subsidy could potentially be used to pay off debt service and/or to do additional parts of a Civic Center project in the future. Then, um, based on the Garfield report, as mentioned, sales tax and hot tax should see an upward trend by bringing changes, um, forward in a project like this. But as a reminder, and as mentioned before, these items cannot be used as a pledge for an, an initial debt issuance, but they could be utilized, um, to help, um, offset some future debt service or to do some additional parts of a project. So let's talk about project scope. Um, and I know Andrew went over several numbers for you. This is just kind of outlining items that were in the Garfield report, and then items, I'm sorry, items that were actually had an, had a number in the Garfield report, and then items that were mentioned in the Garfield report and that were in the conversation Civic Center that went to the voters back in 2020. So on the left there, we've got your convention athletic and exhibits center at 60 million, um, the meeting space renovation of 108 million. That is the north area of the Civic Center. The multi-sport concerts and events arenas, um, at 211 million. Renovations and upgrades to the conference center at 47 million, and then upgraded entertainer and production areas at 5 million. This totals the 431 million that you're gonna see, or you've already seen in your Garfield report. Over on the right-hand side are some other items that, again, were mentioned in the report and actually had been in the original project scope that went to voters in 2020. So there was about 3 and 1/2 million for, um, an Amarillo Center City Park. Um, the parking garage, as mentioned earlier, the, the amount on that's about 18 million. Santa Fe Depot remodel and upgrade is about 10 million. Um, outdoor event space of 2 million, that is, um, something that we've heard from our partners over at WRCA. Um, it, it would be an outdoor pavilion to help with expand their capacity for their event. Um, and then upgrade to public entrances, um, and the exterior improvements, um, along Buchanan Street and other parts of the building. So those together total 48 and 1/2 million for a grand total of just under 480 million. And as a reminder, these items were what we took to the voters back in 2020, and the price tag was 279 million at that point. The only piece that not included previously was that outdoor event space at $2 million on this list. And we're gonna talk about that a little bit more here in a second. So as you all know, interest rates have been moving. They actually moved again the other day. The feds moved the interest rates the other day again. These are very small, so I apologize, but this goes back all the way to January of 2000, and it tracks, um, what taxable interest rates are doing. Um, if you are, were to do any kind of a debt issuance related to a project like this, it would have to be taxable. Most of our debt issuances are tax-exempt, but in order to capitalize on things like naming rights, um, for less restrictions on the third-party operator and other funding sources, we would need a taxable issuance, um, for a project like this. To the far right, you'll see the low point is about January to March of 2020. That's when COVID hit. And stayed low there, but you can see the upward trend over to the right. Um, this was as of January of 2022, just right at, around 3%, and those numbers are continuing to climb, probably closer to 4% at this point in time. So with that, I'm gonna pause for a minute. I'll be back in just a second, but I'm gonna turn this over to Jerry Danforth, um, to talk a little bit about construction costs.
Laura, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
While you're on the tax note subject.
Yes.
Or you are on it.
Yes.
One of the, in the public address system section, someone asked, said they never heard of tax notes. We've used that before, haven't we?
Yes, sir, we have. We have two, um, outstanding tax notes currently, and we have one that was paid off a few years back. So three in fairly recent history that we have utilized.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Other questions for, for now? Okay.
Mayor, Council. Where I want to kind of start is some history and also where we currently are. What happened to the bid prices? Mr. Stanley, you can definitely identify with this in the field of work you're in. You can see where we're at. Uh, what I have referenced here is commercial, uh, construction cost, commercial bid prices, and actually what, uh, consumer price indexes are, uh, the PPI on where we're at as far as numbers. You can see that the numbers for the materials and construction materials has increased faster than what the bid prices are. Some of that is reflected in, uh, major contractors, major construction groups basically buying material. They've bankrolled the material, so they've been able to hold their pricing down. Uh, that can't go on forever. Uh, what we're starting to see is you're seeing the lines get closer together. Where we're at, though, is you can see that the, uh, price index is actually starting to come down again, or started to come down. Uh, the bid price is gonna, they're gonna come back up and intersect, is what you're gonna see happen. This is on a national level that you're looking at on this slide. The second slide. This one here is, is relative to what the national pricing was, and I want you to take note, uh, they're in the non-residential section. In 2020, uh, we saw price increases of, uh, 2.4% nationally, in '21, 8.4% in '22, we're looking at 4 and 1/2%. You're looking at three different, uh, tracks for non-infrastructure buildings, non-residential buildings, and residential. Residential being in the red, that's what most of the public hears about most often. The one in the, uh, blue is what we're talking about, this kind of construction, non-residential heavy commercial construction. This slide is relative to us as we get into this construction cost analysis going forward. Uh, when you look at the, at the, uh, entities that are identified on the right-hand side, uh, construction analytics is, is, uh, done by the government. Turner, RLB, and Mortenson are major construction firms within the United States. And then when you look at RS Means, E&amp;R, and PPI input, those are, you're looking at your projects, uh, that are bid by national construction firms. They do their estimating, and they help the contractors do their pricing. So these are good references for us to look at. But when you look at your PPI, it is growing at a much greater rate than anything else. Uh, that was referenced in the initial slide that you saw there. Uh, but when you look at, and I want to point out Turner, Turner's footprint within the state of Texas is huge. They do a lot of heavy commercial construction. You notice that their graph very similar to what that first graph that I showed you where they're holding their prices. A lot of that's because they control a lot of the inventories. What we're looking at right now, and we spent a lot of time tracking it on the city side to see what's going on with raw materials. As soon as we start seeing the supply chain start to fill back up, we should start seeing some relief in some of our costs. The other thing that we're abundantly aware of is the tariffs that are currently on aluminum and steel. Uh, in your package, you, you've received a full packet that gives you a lot more details on a lot of those trends that are going on. So that helps you kind of get a better grasp of what we're looking at when we're looking at these projected numbers. Okay, the next slide. Now let's go into some history. Hodge Town. We actually have a very good comparable to Hodge Town. Uh, what you're looking at in this slide is actually Wichita, Kansas. They started their construction two months before we finished. Some bullet points to think about. Uh, the cost of construction for their facility, which is almost a twin sister to ours, is $75 million. It took them 18 months to build that facility, and I need to point out that that facility is built on grade, it's not a sunken structure. The other thing is they do have one additional structure that we don't have, but we have multiple other structures that they don't have. We also have more, uh, we had a more complex construction project than what they had there, and, uh, you're only looking at 12 months difference in price between the two projects.
Is that just due to the change in construction costs?
Uh, no. We had a great advantage here in Amarillo. We used a local contractor. The local contractor worked with us. I think they, uh, Mr. Robertson's here from Western Builders. We were able to negotiate with them. Uh, the city of Amarillo has an advantage because they understand construction a lot better than a lot of other municipalities do. Uh, so when the numbers come in front of us, we do a deep dive and assessment on what true costs are and what we can get it for. Uh, our contractor worked with us, they were a great, it was a true partnership. Western Builders, Western Hunt worked with us, our architects worked with us. Uh, you referenced earlier, Mayor, that, uh, you established a budget. We had a budget to work with. Then we hired our architect, and we told our architect to design to this number. Then we developed a partnership with the CMAR, Contract Construction Manager at Risk in this project. And in doing so, allowed us to work together as a contractor and the city to work with our architect to get a product that would be what we needed here in Amarillo to achieve what our goals were. And so consequently, that's not a normal scenario, but we took advantage of the ability to do it. So yes, we did realize quite a bit of savings over what another project would have been. There's a 12-month difference in the price of these, and you did see a major increase in the price over that, that timeframe. Uh, but you were only looking at, at between 5 and 7% at that point in time. So yeah, it's not a true $30 million difference. So we in Amarillo do have the ability to do some things that are very cost-effective. Uh, one thing I do want to point out when we talk about our facility, you know, it was a multipurpose facility. Uh, and quite frankly, you know, we won just about every national award we could potentially win. We also won, uh, Ms. Powell was with me down there when we won the, the state of Texas, uh, Heavy Commercial Construction Award for all towns over 50,000. That put us in competition with Dallas, Houston, and we came out number one because of Hodge Town. So we do have the ability to do it here, uh, and we do have the ability to bring in a top line of product. The other thing that I want to point out on this one here, and, and you'll see the small note at the bottom, Prop 2 delivery schedule and budget. If you'll remember, when Prop 2 was voted on and passed, uh, I can't, came back to the council, uh, in conjunction with Mr. Miller, we identified that we were seeing inflation coming up so fast that we needed to escalate those fire stations, construction projects by three years in order to stay in budget. When we look at the Civic Center project, we're basically gonna have to adapt some of these same strategies that we have here. If you decide to go forward, that would be our recommendation. Yeah, can I answer any questions anybody's got?
Questions?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, sir, Mr. Danforth, so construction costs rising, not limited to just, uh, structures, right? It's all across the board?
Correct. You're looking at labor increases, you're, across the board, yes.
So it seems to me like we're proposing to move quicker with a project than maybe we can afford or would like to because construction costs are going up and interest rates moving as well. Am I understanding the gist of it?
Uh, I would say that if you're looking at interest rates escalating, and you can lock in your interest rate now, similarly what we did, I think the MPEV, once again, is a good example. When we're looking at that, yes, we're looking at some elevated construction costs, but we're also looking at the market. We worked with our contractor when we saw raw materials were going up, we said buy them. Uh, we executed as quickly. But we also looked at when things were going down and knew what those trends were gonna be. Looking at the market now, we're abundantly aware of what the supply chain is. So are we gonna take advantage of that, or are we gonna wait until it goes up and stays up? And that's what you've gotta tell me.
This is not core to the function of the city, um, the Civic Center. Um, but we do have core function that we have needs on, right? We do have fire stations that we need to get built, we do have roads, we do have infrastructure, and we just saw two phenomenal packages come in here. Huge economic stimulus, and, and these represent growth, needs and growth. Uh, streets, roads, sidewalks, water sewer, everything, correct? So if, if the philosophy would be like, let's lock in an interest rate and let's take out a tax note to get out there and get ahead of what could be coming, why would we prioritize a non-core, uh, element that's not core function to our city over the other needs that we have with them both placed in front of us currently?
I guess I would say, I think that's a, yeah, I think that's a council question we have to discuss.
I can answer a construction question, but I've, I work at your guidance, so you tell me what you want to do, and that's what I do.
But you're, are you, so my question to you then would be, are you equally concerned that the cost to build the fire stations are gonna be more next year and the year after that?
Absolutely. We're always cognizant of those costs.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Jerry? Jerry, any final comments? Done?
No, we should be good.
Okay. Thank you.
So I wanted just to bring this slide back up and talk again about, um, the option that's on the agenda is, um, one that goes up to a $260 million budget for a project like this. Um, as mentioned earlier, um, that could look like up to, um, a 57 and 1/2 cent property tax rate, um, but not until 2024. Um, again, there are items that could come along with a project like this that could help lower that amount. So that is kind of at the peak what it potentially could look like. So how, how do we get to a $260 million budget? You, as y'all know, I went over a, a large list earlier. So we have a subcommittee that has worked, um, through some prioritizations, and that's coming from what was brought forward in the Garfield report, what the P3 Committee had talked about, and what, um, the feedback just from citizens in general. So we have a list here, and again, I apologize, it's a little bit small, but, um, it goes through some of the main components and, and the components that could bring forward some of the funding sources that were identified in the Garfield project. So, um, first, um, of course, would be, um, Architects and Engineering Strategic Plan. So the design piece at about, um, $6 million. Then the multi-sport concert and events arena, um, at approximately $165 million. The convention athletic and exhibit center, which would be in addition to the facility over there at $52 million. Then the, the remodel and upgrade of the historic Santa Fe Depot at 10 million. Um, then- Then the upgraded entertainer and production areas, so ramps, the dressing rooms, elevators, kind of some of those ADA things as well at about $3.5 million. Then an outdoor event space at $2 million, which is the, kind of like a pavilion covering for the outdoor area at the request of the WRCA Group. Upgraded public entrances and exterior improvements of approximately $15 million. And then leaving a little bit of room in there for contingency just because of the changing numbers from a construction standpoint at $7 million. And that would be the recommendation of the subcommittee at, to stay within the $260 million. Then the next prioritized items would be the renovations and upgrades to the Conference Center of $47 million, the grand lobby and entrance of $108, then the parking garage at $18 million, and the Amarillo City Park at $3.5 million. Those, we don't know that would make it into the $260 million budget. But I will let Jerry talk for just a minute because some of these numbers are slightly different than what we saw in the Garfield Report. We had Jerry look hard, long and hard at these numbers to see what he thought he could do. And so Jerry, if you don't mind, maybe just speak to what your thoughts are trying to stay within a $260 million budget.
Yeah, basically what we did was we took a look at Garfield's numbers. When they looked at the construction numbers that were actually provided to them by Western Hunt, and and we looked at those numbers and plugged those in, knowing that if we use the same format that we use for the MPEV, we could realize a substantial savings. So it was really coming back to, all right, what does that cost per square foot look like? What does that cost for raw materials look like at this point in time? And what is our potential deliverables at? So that's really where we came to the numbers on these to say, we think we can get it done for this number. We know that we can negotiate with architects and engineers, get it, get some better pricing, negotiate with our contractors, identify that scope, use the CMAR process to work to get the best value that we can possibly get on a project.
So we have Steven Adams and Paul Jason with Specialized Public Finance here with us as well, and they're going to be available to answer any questions that you might have for them. They are the city's financial advisors, and we have worked with them to bring forward an option that council could consider if they chose to. And that's for the $260 million in tax notes. And so they have worked with some banks to bring forward an option. And so I want to kind of walk you through what that might look like. So right now, we're at a current tax rate of 44.33 cents. Since that tax rate, we have had a couple of other debt issuances. The first one was for City Hall, and again, that was a tax exempt issuance, and the true interest cost was 1.78%. What that translates to is less than two pennies on a tax rate. Then we also have the athletic field lighting project that was approved by council earlier this year. Again, that's also a tax exempt debt issuance and has a true interest cost of 2.92%. And that is 2/10ths of a penny. So together, those two together are about two pennies that will be added into the current tax rate. Then for a $260 million Civic Center project, we would assume a true interest cost of 4.46%. And again, as a reminder, this would have to be a taxable debt issuance, and that translates into a little over 11 cents, so 11.13 cents. So what this would look like is we do have an ordinance for council to consider if they, if y'all so choose, and it would award a $260 million taxable, tax note to Frost Bank. And the initial rate on that would be 3.85%. And that stays in place until February of 2023. At that point in time, it becomes a variable rate. But then it has the opportunity to be refinanced beginning in April of 2023. And we would, at that point in time, look at any favorable opportunity to refinance that and extend it out over a longer period of time. So with that, that could translate at a snapshot, I mean, this is just a snapshot in time right now with our existing operating and maintenance rate and all of this, the new debt that's coming on and our existing debt. We would be looking at a high point, not till 2024, of about 57.5 cents. But as a reminder, there are items that are going to change as, if council, if council approves a project like this, there will be items that will start changing. One would be we would more than likely start exploring a third-party operator. That could change what the subsidy to the Civic Center looks like currently. So as a project gets completed and starts coming online, that could change local sales tax collections and local hot collections. And so those are items. And then there could be naming rights that come on either early on in the project or later on. And so future councils could utilize any of those funding sources to potentially pay for some of the debt issuance and lower some impact to the property tax rate. Or they could utilize it to do other portions of the project that could not be addressed with an option like this. So I have one more slide here that I wanted just to kind of show a rough estimate of what this might look like on a $100,000 home from a monthly increase. So, and and the way this works, you'll see a spike in 2024, and that's related to some accrued interest that would have to be paid out and then would lower down and then kind of go up again. So we're looking, over the 30-year time period, the the estimated monthly impact on a $100,000 home would be under $9 per month. So with that, I can answer any questions? Or again, if council would like to, there's an option to move forward with ordinance number 7985.
Laura, looking at this chart.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's assuming on today's snapshot. In other words, if future councils don't put the revenue that this project would anticipate, which could be 40% of what is needed to pay down on the debt, this chart assumes none of that revenue was put toward that debt.
That is correct. That, this assumes the entire project is funded funded out of the life of the debt by property taxes only.
Questions, council for Laura?
Okay, I don't want to sound naive, but maybe I am. How do we go about in the future taking that money and reducing the debt so that it doesn't impact? I'm, I want to be real plain spoken for, if if we're going to consider this, how do we take that money and put it against the debt so that it lowers the tax rate for the citizens?
So the way it works, and I'll let Steven expand if I, if I don't put everything out here, but it would have a full pledge. The debt would be fully pledged by property taxes. Just because it's pledged to be paid for by property taxes, that's kind of like the collateral for it. But councils can decide how they want to pay the debt. So each year, each council goes through setting a property tax rate. And so as we look at outstanding debt, if there's other funding sources on some of the debt that's backed by property taxes and council chooses instead to pay some of that debt service with another funding source, that lowers the amount that would need to be considered on the property tax rate for that year. Is that, does that make sense? Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
To get, pardon me, to get directly to the gist of your question, how do we make sure that it doesn't, you can't?
Well, yeah, I would like to see, is there a way to make sure?
There is not a way to make sure, to guarantee that any revenues generated by this project or by any other projects would be allocated to reducing the debt service on this project. They can be at the discretion of a future council. They could also alternatively be used to pay for fire stations or roads.
Absolutely.
Or other needs inside the general fund. So that'll be a decision, and I'm sure a very spirited conversation with future council or with your council if you're on a future council. I don't want to make any assumptions. But it would be a future class of council or year of council.
So this is going to happen every year for the next 35 years?
Yes.
Okay.
Depending on how long that term would be.
Yes. And what we've got modeled on here would be a 30-year term, so.
30.
Mm-hmm. And and, but you're absolutely right. Just like, you all know, you can only set a budget one year at a time. You can only set a property tax rate one year at a time. And so you you can't bind a future council to do anything other than, they are bound by what the bond covenants are related to the outstanding debt, so.
So they would be bound to paying a certain amount of debt service every year?
Absolutely.
They would not be bound as to what, how they pay for that. They could use property taxes 100% as we have projected and as we're required to project because we don't know what those other revenues are going to be. Or once they realize those additional revenues in future years, they could allocate that towards debt service and reduce the tax rate for that budget year. It would mean that the tax rate has a very real likelihood of going up and down each fiscal year if you're committing all excess rev, or additional or new revenues to debt service on this project. It would also assume that there's other funding sources for those other projects that you have to do. But I I also would 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 point out that this project will generate revenues that could then be paid, used to pay for those other projects that we have to do and don't have choices on.
But this chart here basically says without bringing, without doing that, without purposefully going in and taking the funds that we would get from naming rights or whatever, this is what it would cost per $100,000.
That is correct. So this is essentially, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, but the high point. That, you know, this is the high estimate of what it could look like on.
Every year.
Every year onto the property taxpayers. So it would be this or less, depending on what councils chose to do one year after another.
Let me see if I understand it. I've been in real estate a long time, so I'm going to relate it to residential real estate. People buy a house, they get a 30-year loan. They say it's $200,000, and they win the lottery and get $2,000. They could pay that, that would shorten the length of the loan, but it wouldn't change the payment. So is it the same thing here? I think he's asking.
So what this would assume is not shortening the length of the payments, it would just be changing. So instead of maybe paying for your mortgage out of your salary, your take-home salary, you might be paying for a portion of your mortgage with, from your salary and a portion of it from your lottery winnings.
Or that second job that you're.
So you could.
Very competent spouse got, but your payment would be the same.
You could lower your payment if you refinance, because you'd have to refinance.
And that is, that's a very good point, too. So if we go back, I don't want to get anyone's hopes up because we are certainly in a rising interest rate environment. We are still, you know, at about the average over the last 20 years or so. I mean, we're still at a favorable interest rate point, but it is, it is certainly rising at this point. And so that is something we do on all outstanding city debt. So if we had issued debt, let's say, back in 2020 at the highest point, once it becomes callable, say, 10 years later, we're looking to see, should we refinance and lower that tax rate? That lowers the impact on whatever the revenue sources funding that. That is something that we will, we certainly will look at on a project like this, along with all other outstanding debt.
But also, don't we have to kind of look at, I think it was in the executive summary, didn't it say something about that every 50 basis points that the interest rate goes up equates to approximately $50 million of interest and principal over the life of the loan?
That was God, the Garfield busting, Stiefel.
Yes.
That is correct.
So, and the Fed has signaled 11 hikes over the next two years.
And like I said, I don't want to get anyone, but that we will always look for opportunities, whether it's five years from now, 10 years from now, you know, we we always look at any of our callable bonds. If there's a favorable opportunity to refinance, that's, that's what we bring to y'all, and then, and councils make decisions on that.
Yeah, we've done that several times over the past five years.
We've done it a lot since COVID. We have pretty much refinanced all of our outstanding debt because the interest rates have been so favorable over the last few years.
But this, we wouldn't really see an opportunity for what, 10 years?
It depends on what interest rates do.
Well, no, I mean, an opportunity.
We, we would look, we would.
Refinance would be roughly 10 years down the road.
On the tax note, we would look, the earliest opportunity would be April of next year, but then the next one would more than likely be 10 years later. I'm assuming is how we would structure that. It's a good point.
So Laura, what's the dollar amount that we're currently subsidizing the Civic Center for right now? So what are we looking at?
So it, it was at its height during COVID about $2 million. And it's probably fluctuating more between, per year with hotel occupancy taxes. And so what we're closer to now is probably about $1.5 million. I think in the Garfield Report, it showed about 1.4. So it does fluctuate a little bit based on the number, you know, events and what they bring in. So that's subsidizing the net loss over there.
So if we continue to not bring in any revenue or new revenue than what we're already bringing in, then that subsidy or that gap is going to get much wider, correct?
Yes, it will continue to grow, yes. And so, for instance, going back to the comment about during COVID, we had to pretty much halt bringing events in. That was a snapshot in time of what that looks like if events are not able to come in. And the subsidy was around, I believe it was around $2 million. But again, as infrastructure ages, that can look different because repairs and maintenance look different as a building ages, so.
And so those costs are going to increase, obviously.
Yes.
And and we're going to be in a worse situation down the road than what we're in right now.
Yes, absolutely. And I know there's been some repairs that have come up just recently that have made us all hold our breath a little bit because, yes, I mean, it it's an old facility and there continues to be more and more repairs needed on it.
I heard talk about a video that had water streaming through the roof, just as an aside, but.
So we're not being competitive to be, to be able to bring in, you know, major events or new revenue. We're going to have lost revenue, interest rates are going to continue to climb now more than ever.
Yes.
And we're also dealing with inflation.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. And other pressures on construction costs right now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could.
Sure.
With with Dr. Sauer, it seems like what we're not talking about is the voter. So they don't just go away. So is your concern that if if this was issued, this debt issuance of $260 million, that you still have to go out and find a anchor tenant or a tenant? You still have to design plans? You really wouldn't get anywhere within a year, more than likely, unless you have some other things that are already working? And are you, are you thinking future council would shift this over to infrastructure, fire station, something else? And then then we, we wouldn't be able, or you wouldn't be able to to see this go for the intended use?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Jerry, how quickly could we, I mean, Eddie, I'm sorry to mean to cut you off. You have more thoughts you want to share there, but I'd love to hear Jerry talk, just timeline.
No, my, my thought was, my intention would be that this is something that we do have to look at. I mean, based upon, based upon future growth of Amarillo, based upon the other things that are going on, I do think we have to look at it. The, the deal is, is how do we, the ultimate goal is how do we lessen the impact to to the citizens of Amarillo doing something that we, we really have got to do going forward? It's not that I'm afraid a future council would take this money and shift it somewhere else. It's, would we, would we, it's kind of like, you know, when they, when the state legislature okayed, whatever it was, Powerball or whatever, and the idea was it was going to go to fund, it was going to go to fund education solely. And where did it all end up? Well, it all ended up in the general fund, and they didn't do what was intended. So that's the same, that's my same question I'm asking you right now, is if we do pass this thing, we do consider this thing. we do consider this thing, are we gonna be like our state legislature and then not follow through? Or are we gonna follow through and take the proceeds like we're supposed to take the proceeds and pay this thing down and lower that by forty percent? Forty to fifty-five percent?
One thing I maybe want to expand upon is hotel occupancy tax has very limited uses. So it has, it's, it's defined in state law, can only be used basically to support tourism in a community. So if we were to see expanded hotel occupancy tax or if we got a third-party operator in and it reduced the subsidy so we weren't spending as much hotel occupancy tax over at the Civic Center, we can't take that hotel occupancy tax and go build a fire station or something like that. So it would have to go back to something related to tourism which would be centered around a project like this.
And we could come back to this?
Yes, yes.
You could pay down the debt on the Civic Center.
That would be an, an acceptable use for it. Otherwise, it would have to go to maybe other improvements over there.
So now then also in the list is something about going to the state legislature for an increase two percent. So that's probably two million dollars a year at least?
Yes, uh-huh.
So my next question is, is there any precedent for this happening before?
Yes, there is, there's, and I, I think Mr. Miller can speak to that a little bit as well.
There's been a number of cities that have gotten increased hot tax allocations and, and their stated purp- they, they did it for a stated purpose with their community. They passed resolutions committing themselves to allocate, if it's, you know, two, two percent would generate an extra little over two million dollars right now, and that would be a growing number. You can commit that to that, now that doesn't prevent a future council for you, from using it for something else. But it does get very difficult to say, I would rather use this hot money for a different project and increase the tax rate to offset that money that we have been historically, for however many you, years, using to offset the tax impact of the Civic Center project. So, yes, there is precedent to the question of can you guarantee that a future council can't use it for something else? No, you can't. But you can put the, the mechanisms in place, what the expectation is, and they have to take very overt steps to change that intention and expectation.
So what's the procedure for getting that two percent?
It would be working with our, our local representatives and getting it a carve-out basically by the state legislator, basically defining that there is an additional two percent of hotel occupancy tax that's specific to a project. And so that would put further restrictions on a project like this. It would be similar to, more similar to how the Venue District has their two percent that's a very defined area where that money can be used. Yeah, so it would be, it would be defined and it would take action. It would probably take a lot of work, partnerships to get that through the state legislator, but then it would be very defined on what those dollars could be used for. And more than likely, once that, if that ever went away, then that, you know, that project per se went away, then that funding source would have to go away along with it.
And I would completely understand doing something like that. I would assume that that would be not outside of the bounds of Amarillo. I mean, they worked really hard, and even though we haven't gotten that into place at this point in time yet, we've had the approval for the T-Pit, which is the same basic thing-
That is correct, it is.
Which is probably the same basic process. So it is well within our means to be able to acquire that two percent carve-out, just a little effort.
It's a good point.
And that, and that precedent does exist. There are some, not a lot, of cities that have a carve-out specifically like what we're talking about. So it's not impossible to do, and there is a precedent for it being done.
I think the way to approach the legislature is to say that we're very conscious of asking our property taxpayers to bear the weight of this project. We're working very hard to creatively look for ways that it doesn't land on our property taxpayers. We've identified these revenue sources, and one of them is, can we ask the people who are coming to use the facilities and use the hotels to contribute to the cost? And that takes it off of property taxpayers. I would hope we would have support, not just from our local delegates, I, I know we have support. I won't speak for them, but boy, they're a great team and they represent us so well. But I would hope that that sentiment of trying to remove the burden off of property taxpayers would carry some, some weight. We would have people who would be willing to listen at the legislature if that was our message. I think it is, it's our heart.
So Mayor, are you, are you saying like with the, the taxpayer, with the voter, you, you're looking to lessen the burden on the taxpayer, I, I agree with that. But then we're doing this without a vote. We're not calling a GO, we're not going through a structure that's a CO that has a petition process. To me, this tax note's the, the one and only loophole that I see that, that doesn't really kind of fit. Everything has a process to hear what the people want. Otherwise, we're just gambling with their money, you know? So like, we, we should get support from our, our taxpayer and our citizen in order to move forward with a debt issuance of this size. The tax note doesn't do that, correct? Like, it, it does it without?
I disagree that we're gambling with anyone's money. I think clearly our overall goal is to be financially responsible, always. And anything we're doing, whether it's building a fire station, giving raises, setting a budget, looking at the Civic Center project, which this, some members of this council have done for five years now, the idea is how can we do this and save money? So I think the overall lens here is what is the most financial, financially responsible position that we can take and what position saves us money? And so I, I don't at all agree with the characterization that this is a gamble. This is a well-researched, this is the fifth report we've seen in twelve years on the economic impact as well as the cost of doing the project and the ROI of doing the project. I think it is well researched. I think the project, we can, we can debate on whether or not you think it's a core need or whether or not, I think I do believe it is a core need of being financially responsible. Costs are increasing over there, revenue is decreasing over there, and that doesn't even begin to touch the economic impact that it has in the city. We already have investments in the ballpark and the parking garage and the downtown hotel. Those investments all had pro formas that relied on this project being done. So what we've already invested, I think, holds in the balance of being at risk and being able to succeed if we don't move forward with this project. So in some ways, you could reverse that and say, it's a gamble to think that those investments that we've already taxpayer dollars behind would succeed if we don't follow through on what previous councils set in front of us as the next step in completing those projects. So I just, I really want us to be intentional with our words. I, I suspect there are at least five different viewpoints up here, and, and we're gonna talk about it and discuss it. It's not gonna be an easy decision for any of us. But just being intentional with our words, I think is really important.
And I appreciate the caution in that, and you've told me, like, this is the time to discuss it, this is the time to, to be passionate and to say what you have. Because I'm looking at an agenda which has, you know, item L on it on the same day that I got K. So I got this Thursday, so I've had three days to digest this, to learn about tax notes, to learn about SB two, interest and sinking, how that side's affected, M and O, how it's not. House Bill eighteen sixty-nine says the opposite from what I can see, you know? And, and I had a conversation with Dustin Burrows this morning, so like, I'm working to try to understand this. This isn't enough time, honestly, for the people that are sitting here to get a grasp of what we're doing. I don't know that it's enough time for all of us in, in consideration of your words of let's be careful, let's be cautious. So, so Mr. Stanley, don't say gambling out here in, in front of the public unless you know what you're talking about. Point in fact, like, I don't exactly know what I'm talking about. How would I take action on a two hundred and sixty million dollar tax note that I don't have the terms of the debt, I don't have length, everything that we're doing? I don't know about the refi? I, I, I would very graciously ask my council for more time. Why did we put K and L on the same agenda? Why are we trying to take action on this today, Mayor?
I wish we could give more time. The environment that we're in, it's just not the hand that we've been dealt. I wish the Fed hadn't signaled that we, they're gonna bump interest rates eleven times in the next two years. I wish construction costs weren't, I wish the graphs that we were looking at did not, every single one of them shows a sharp uptick in the cost of the project as well as in the cost of the, of the interest to borrow the money to do the project. So I, I wish we weren't sitting in the position that we're sitting in. And I think we've always understood that it's more difficult for you. It, it's super hard to be the latest member on the team. No, wait, let me finish. I think it's really, really hard. We, we had a four-year head start on learning about this project. We've been in-depth looking at it before you were on council, and so I, I, I agree. And, and I applaud you for the effort that you have put in and the time you've put in to understand how our tax rate is calculated, the difference between operating to maintenance and interest and sinking, the new laws that have come on, on the books since all of this happened. It, it is a lot to process, and that's, that's part of where I sit just as a leader, as an elected official. And I think it's hard for voters because this is a complicated issue. There's a lot to it, there's a lot to understand in how it hits the tax rate, there's a lot to understand in how the revenue is calculated. Some of it's operational, meaning we subsidize it, some of it is revenue-related, some of it is economic impact to our local businesses, there's hot tax, there's sales tax. The idea that some of those funds can be spent on, you know, fire stations, some of them can't be spent on fire stations. And so it's, it is a complicated issue, and, and I agree. With more time, I think we could all understand it better. I do not think situationally that our current environment offers us that time.
We don't have two weeks, Mayor? I'm not talking about two years.
It comes at, it comes at a cost.
Not really, I mean, interest rates aren't gonna move up in the next two weeks. Construction costs aren't gonna change in the next two weeks in a practical, logical sense. Now, and we're saying we don't want to, I, I don't know what's gonna happen in a year, two, three years from now. You don't either, so we're trying to make calculated, educated guests, guesses and, and take managed risks. That's what we did with P O B, what a great ROI. I mean, this ROI is like a one point one-five ROI. It, it has a, a poor return on it to take such a great risk. Two hundred and sixty million dollars and we don't have two weeks? And you yourself said it's complicated, and, and you acknowledge the fact I've only been here a year. SB two's been here a year, tax notes are fairly new for our city.
I'm not sure I agree with that point, actually.
Why do we not have two weeks? That's all I'm asking for, is two weeks, put it on next week's agenda, or next session's agenda.
I, I mean, we'll let the council decide, but I'm not sure, how, Councilmember Smith?
Well, you may not have finished, I got a prepared statement I want to go over here, but finish your questions.
So let me finish. Dustin Burrows was very gracious to take my phone call earlier today and to tell me, House Bill eighteen sixty-nine that he authored and, and wrote in amends some of what he's seeing and, and what we're seeing around the state where there's a misuse of CEOs. It, it's a, it's a tool that's being used to circumvent the will of the taxpayer. Now, there's an appropriate way to use a CEO, and there's an appropriate way to use a tax note. Eighteen sixty-nine, what it, what it in essence does is it says, you can't really count on the fact that what you're doing in this two hundred and sixty million dollar debt issuance is only gonna hit your INS. It may very well, according to this, hit your M and O. And when this goes to the Attorney General's office for an endorsement or ratification, this would be something that, that would be in conflict with that, according to, to Mr. Burrows. Now, he told me that, you know, there are different things, and, and I obviously am not a lawyer, I don't know everything that has to do with this House bill. But to my point, we could vet this and we could make sure that at least if we're moving in the right direction, we're gonna pass a vote here today that could go down to the AG's office and would get endorsed. With everything we're looking at, all I'm asking for is for us to be a little more cautious, and I'm agreeing with the Mayor. This is complicated, and there's a lot of moving parts. I'm agreeing with the Mayor. City, Civic Center and City Hall are needs, these are not things we can ignore forever. But I'm also agreeing with AEDC. Like, we have a great stimulus coming, a great economic impact coming to our town. Five years from now, with that economic impact, what can we do? And what's the rush, why the hurry? The Civic Center's not gonna fall down, it's not emergent, it's not core to the function of the, of the city like City Hall. If we can't get in this building, we can't run the city, right? But that's not the case across, across the yard here. So I just would advocate to my council, in the way of what we said, Mayor, what you said, was you wanted to listen to the voters, you wanted to explore with Garfield a public-private partnership. So far, we, we're doing none of those. We don't have a private partnership, it's all public, it's all gonna hit the tax rate, it's all gonna be on the burden of the taxpayer, and we're not listening. It failed in the vote.
I don't disagree, I don't agree with everything you said, but I think Councilmember Smith had the next.
Thank you.
Sure.
I've served since the mayor appointed me to serve on the Civic Center Committee with the mayor of the council, two of us. And I've served almost eighteen months, shortly after the bond election failed before. But she spent a ton of time, I spent a lot of time, but I volunteered for that. And we could say that it's a difficult decision, I'm gonna say it's an easy decision. We've had two bonds that have not passed, but there's many reasons why they didn't pass. The size of the bonds, size of the arena, cost of the project, other, other project components that weren't a priority. Bottom line, do we need this project to happen? When I talk to the people, the clear answer to me is yes. There's people that I've talked to that voted against the Civic Center, but they say we need a Civic Center. We need to take action. I believe people want the project, and because of that, I'm looking at this as an easy decision. Do the project or don't do the project. It is easy to see we need to do it. We've already spent money, and so this is repetitive what the mayor said because she and I have been working together on this. But we've already spent money to build the ballpark, or the MPEV, and the parking garage. The success of those two projects is contingent upon expanding the Civic Center and increasing the number of people using the Civic Center. If we want to protect what we've already built, we need to expand the Civic Center. What we heard in the last election about the project was that people wanted to pay less for the project. That I think they thought that it was too much. So we scaled the project back, we cut out some components, we cleaned what we cut out, and we proposed to do less of the project to save costs. We also have new revenue that future councils can put toward paying down the debt. We've had that discussion. And because saving money is a priority, there is urgency to move quickly. Construction prices are rising, interest rates are rising. Doing some of the project now and locking in the lower interest rates will save money. Waiting six months or six years will result in paying more for the project. Waiting to do the full-scale project will result in paying more for the project. And this wasn't in my prepared statement, but I found out today that every month that we delay, I know we're only talking about two weeks, but every month, the additional cost could, would be two point seven to three million if we waited to a vote, say in November. That'd be five or six months, that'd be sixteen to eighteen million dollars. We want to save money, the project that at this scope and in this timing saves us money. We have seen several councils work on this project for over a decade. And maybe we all disagree on the perfect solution, but this solution has many of the components that we need to move forward. I believe we need to move forward on this project. I believe we need to move forward on this project. Therefore, I want to make a motion now. I move to adopt ordinance 7985 to authorize the issuance of City of Amarillo, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Note Series 2022A, resolving other matters incident and related thereto, including the approval of a paying agent registrar agreement and a purchase letter. That's my motion.
I'll second it. And I've got a statement, but mine's not written.
Okay.
So I've talked to, I've had a lot of people, had conversations since this came out. And it has been on both sides of the equation, actually. I've heard from people that are for it. I've heard from people that are against it. The one thing that I have heard consistently out of everybody is, I don't want to spend more of my taxes, but we've got to do something. And that's what a majority of the people have said. This is really difficult to make this move forward and do something like this. I, I would feel so much better if I could lock everybody in to doing what we're saying that we want done, which is the private partnership part of this, the private-public partnership will go directly to that. I, I can't guarantee that part of it. I just have to hope that the councils that follow, whether I'm reelected, whether I'm not reelected, or whether I serve again or whatever, that they're going to follow through with what we've asked for them to do, which is to take the, the proceeds that we have said are going to be earmarked for the payment of the debt on this building is done and it's not put into the general fund, or it's not put into the hot tax and they use the hot tax for something else. It is, are they using it for the way that we asked for them to use it? And, and there's no way that I can, can do that going forward. I will say this, it's been part of my deal ever since the first time that I ran for office was, I want Amarillo to be a place where my kids come back and want to raise their kids. And this is inherently part of that. I mean, we can have P O B, we can have C M V R, we can have them come in and do and come and bring these people. But here's going to be the case, is we've got to have things here that keep people from bleeding away, to see our young talent bleeding away. And this is part of how that ends up happening. Also how it ends up happening whenever we talk about the, putting on the 60,000 square foot park of the back part of that building is also, it is designed so that you can have, what is it, eight basketball courts, which would be 16 volleyball courts, which in essence will create at least an impact on our young families because they have one less trip at least a year that they are traveling out of town, that they stay home. And that, that immediately amounts to $750. That's conservative money, $750. And whenever we begin to have those kind of things that actually puts money back in their pocket or keeps it from going out of their pocket, those are the things that I think become, they're more than intangible. They're tangible things. I can touch them. I can touch them every week. I can touch them every year. And those are going to be the important things of, that is what this also helps provide. We have to look at those kinds of things. We have to look at the economic impact. No, the Civic Center is not going to have the economic impact of producer-owned beef coming to Amarillo and setting their thing up. But there is economic impact. And I believe we got a document sent to us today that the source is Garfield and it will create construction jobs, right, 1976 construction jobs while this is going on. And it will expand a, the operations to a, an additional 160 people. And the economic impact over a 10-year period will be 119 million dollars. And the economic impact from construction will be right at 400 million dollars. So there is economic impact to be had by doing this. Make no bones about it, there is economic impact. And so I think it's important that we have to also weigh those things in, that they do come back to us. And all we can do is if we do pass this and we do move it forward, we are, we are requesting of the other, of councils that follow us, that they will follow what we've set out, that they will take the proceeds that were meant from a public-private partnership and they will put them directly against the, the, the debt that's on that building so that it does lower the impact that it is on our citizens. We can't reduce that impact on our citizens down to zero. There's no way. That's impossible. I mean, we're, that's, that's what, we've been working on this for 10 years, right? Phase one came out 2012. And we've worked at it and we've chipped away and we've chipped away and we've chipped away and we've chipped away. And I think we're at a point where it's time to make a move forward. It's time to do this because it sets things up for our future. We can't look at this as a year thing. We can't look at it as a two-year thing. This is a 20-year, 30-year, 40-year. Actually, if we really want to look at it, it is a 50-year project because that's what the Civic Center has been. It's been a 50-year project. And I can guarantee you, the people that sat in these seats in 1964, whenever they went forward with this, they had no idea that it was going to be a 50-year project. So we should expect that this will be at least a 50-year project. And that's, that's the impact that it has. And I, I don't think we can wait. I don't think we can wait.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Let me say a little more. I mentioned about, I think it's an urgent issue. Let me explain further. We know interest rates are rising, 11 potential increases in the future. The, and I mentioned an amount if we wait two weeks or a month or two or whatever. But with all due respect to my fellow councilman over here, Mr. Stanley, when we had the issue of replacing lighting where poles had blown down, I know he took the position, we need to get the parts early before prices go up. That's kind of the way I see this. We need to lock this in and move forward. It, it's an urgent issue. And, and I happen to agree with Mr. Stanley. I'd like to see us get an anchor tenant and we, just because we don't have it ahead of time, I think we need to get the, commit to build it and go to work on finding that. So that's all I've got to say for now.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Well said. We have a motion and a second with regard to item L. Questions or discussion from this side of the dais?
Yes, thank you. So I, I do agree with Councilmember Smith and also Councilmember Sauer in the need for us to move forward with this project. We, we all know, just in using common sense, you know, the Civic Center has lots of problems. So the problems are not going to fix themselves. They are only going to get worse, is what's going to happen. And as a, as an elected official and a leader, it is my job to make those tough decisions. So I have to do that. And I have to make those decisions with the resources that I have available. I have to do my homework. I mean, I just can't, you know, come in here and, and make a decision by the seat of my pants. And so every council meeting, I try to do my homework and I try to come in and be prepared. But this situation here, since, since 2017, since I've come on the council, I mean, the Civic Center has needed an update. I mean, I know that we have lost a lot of major acts over the years, which means we're losing revenue. And we're continuing to use revenue because I've even asked that question even before coming on to the council. So as a leader, I cannot just stick my head in the sand and do nothing. That's not what I was elected to do. The other thing is, is I have, I, I, I have a group of people over here in my ear that, you know, they don't want this, they don't want that. I have a group of people over here that, that are for it. But my focus is, is as I represent 200,000 people. So at the end of the day, I've got to figure out what is the best decision for the city of Amarillo. And that's hard. And sometimes I don't like making those decisions and they're tough, but I have to. Right or wrong, and I've got to use the resources that I have, I've got to use the facts that I have. And then I've got to move forward and do the best job that I can. And the next day, what do I do? I got to get up and I got to ask for new grace and new mercies and I got to start again because I'm not going to ever get it right. But I've got to try and I've got to keep moving forward and I'm not going to sit here and do nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley.
One more thing, I believe time is of the essence.
Sure. Come back to you.
And it hasn't been, it's been kind of glossed over a little bit. But there's a person sitting in this room who has had a significant impact on our M P E V coming in at the rate that it came in. And he did a fabulous job of negotiating, working through. We ended up getting more than we asked for. And I think time's of the essence because we can't take a chance on him not being here to see that the project is completed and that's Jerry Danforth.
Agreed.
And we, as a council, we've worked with him.
You can shake your head, but dude, watching the way that you came through on the M P E V because you talk about the one for Wichita, we could have ended up having a $75 million project, but we did get a $75 million project. It just cost us 45. And I think that's important, that's an important, intangible part of this, that I don't think people of the public of Amarillo actually even realize how important he will be to the success of this project coming in budget and on time. And that was our mantra during the whole thing during the M P E V was in bud, within the budget and on time. And we actually came in under budget because we got things that we had cut out that came back in. So we actually were under budget and on time.
It's true. And, and, and that wasn't a one-off. We've seen that Jerry's team accomplished that on multiple fire stations, lots of other projects, the P D work. There's been a lot of projects in the last five years that we've watched your team capture savings and use this same model, which is we set the budget and then you guys value engineer and build to the budget. It's a model that's working for us right now.
It is. It's an important model.
Yeah. Thank you for highlighting that, Eddie. Mr. Stanley.
Yes, ma'am. Just my final statement. You know, you're a leader and, and you're, you're asked to make tough decisions. Good leadership bases those tough decisions on principles and ethics. And so with principle and with ethics, we can show the respect that is due to the system that we signed up for. We are representatives and they are our bosses. And we are not respecting the system when we circumvent the will of the taxpayer. And this is not good leadership. And for us to not even give it two weeks, you're not even willing to listen to your, your fellow councilmen. You're not even willing to give two weeks to table this. It has to be now. And the reason it has to be now is because it's not good leadership.
I think that we have listened. We've taken a year to pause from the last time that we asked for voters to give us input on this. It's been 18 months. A lot has changed. We have more information to base the decision on, on what our economy is doing. The local Amarillo economy is booming. We have opportunities here and we have to make bold moves in order to capture those opportunities. We have multiple team members that are doing the work, the Economic Development Corporation team. You guys are doing amazing work to bring opportunities here. You are bringing jobs here that we need to create people for. And the way you create people is you keep the people that you have, you keep the kids that you want to work these jobs. One of them averaging more than, you know, one company averaging more than $50,000 a year in salary, the other's quite a bit higher even. Those are jobs that I want our kids to have. I want Caprite kids to have those, Tascosa kids to have them, P D, Randall. I want those kids to have those high-paying jobs right here in our community. And we have to recruit them to stay and be a part of our community post-high school. And that looks like quality of life attractions in our community. It looks like nice concerts. It looks like sporting events. It looks like having youth sport events and tournaments in our city versus families having to drive and travel to Denver or Dallas or Albuquerque to, to have those opportunities for their kids. For such a time as this, I agree with Councilmember Smith. You could frame it up as a hard decision because there are so many complexities to it. But truthfully, I know we need it. And I feel the urgency of the changing environment. And in a lot of ways, I relate to what Frida said. You know, we could kick the can and it could fall to a future council. But we sit here with the ability to do something about it. And I think given all of those factors, I feel, I, I respect what you're saying, but I, I couldn't disagree more. I think it's poor leadership to wait anymore when we've been studying it for over a decade. And the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. So I think it's financially responsible. And the complexity of it all and looking on a 50-year vision, this is the financially responsible decision. And I think there will be voters who don't agree with that. And I would venture to say they haven't studied it as deeply as the folks sitting at this table. And that's not an insult to them because they elected us to do that job. So I, I'm trying as hard as I can to listen, to respect, but also to feel the weight of knowing this is what our city needs. And the longer we wait, the more opportunity we miss and the more expensive it gets to try and grab that opportunity. So I think we've all had good discussion about it with that.
Call for a vote.
We'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, I think that counts as a four-one vote. Do I accurately reflect that, counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you all for your discussion and staff. Thank you for your work. I especially want to call out our Garfield partners and all of the work that they did. I, I think they're watching. I don't know if they're still watching, but we sure appreciate them, the expertise they brought to the project and their patience with us as we asked them to rework, bring us different options and different proposals. Like you said, Jason, they, they brought three different scenarios so that we could have multiple options to consider and we appreciate all of their work. With that, it brings us to the end of our action agenda. I would ask the city attorney to read our dismissal language into executive session.
Yes, ma'am. Pursuit of the Texas Open Meetings Act, closed session in the Admiral City Council, was announced on May 24th, 2022 at 6:13 PM under the following authority, Section 551.087, discuss commercial financial information received from existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility or for incentives the city is willing to extend or financial information submitted by the state. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned into executive.